Oh, I was a little early to tell you that. Now we're underway. A bit warm up there. Okay, so no additions. Can we have a motion to approve the agenda then? It's not one addition, okay? Counselor, it will be a second, Deputy Mayor, okay? All those payers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Let's move on to the approval of the previous minutes. Counsel, it's number 10. Anybody have any errors or admissions or not?
Okay, just is it errors in admissions or errors in omission?
Omission.
Okay.
Yeah, anything that was missing that should have been there that didn't get captured.
Perfect. I had nothing to admit either way, so.
Okay, yes. So I guess hearing none, we'll just declare those as approved. Oh, sorry. No, we're just going to just circulate it. All right, let's review the action items that you have there. Ask Jennifer, just one note on those, just so everybody's clear. Once an action item has been completed and reported, it's deleted. So it's not an ongoing item, right? So completed means you see it once here. So those items that are completed, you won't see them on the next action item statement, right? You've moved on now and stuff.
Makes sense.
Okay.
But they will remain as a copy in the minutes though, right?
Well, they'll be in the previous.
Yes.
Package, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Oh, okay.
I did want to, if I may, just make them know because I realized that it says status complete, but there wasn't communication back to council on it related to the appeal process. So I spoke with our municipal advisor and there is no appeal process included because there's no body higher than council to appeal to. However, a member of council could go if they felt that the appeal again or the ruling against them was unfair or unjust, could themselves take it to the courts. But we as council and the town cannot dictate to the courts that they would have to hear it. So that would be the process. So of your own accord, you can take it to the court system, but it's not something that we can put into our process as required because we can't tell the courts what to do. I will note that the Cape Breton municipality has written a letter or noted in their discussions on this, a letter to the province requesting that we do add an appeal process. So at this time, there's no appeal process. There would be an independent avenue that a member of council could take. And I think we wait to hear if anything happens from the letter sent from CPR.
That's in reference to the code of conduct. There's lots of things stirring around the code of conduct that I think we may not need to be the ones to spend a lot of time and energy in exploring it because somebody who has perhaps more resources than other municipalities could do some of that legwork. So be patient because I think there'll be, you know, more stuff coming from other places around some of those same issues we've been caught in. Deputy Mayor Loops, do you have a hand up there?
No, well, that took a lot of promise. Like, we don't need to add letter with it to give it more support because they're doing the work for us.
Yeah, that's great. All right, any other questions or any other comments on any of those? Good. Okay, so let's move on to our new business. And I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Loops to introduce the first item, which is the first reading regarding the development agreement. And we're hoping that Crystal has joined us, hasn't she?
Wait till Crystal joins us.
Well, yes, we will. So we may jump to the next item if we're not sure that she's there.
She got the invite.
Okay, well, let's move on to item B. We'll hold that one and some, you're going to check in with her just to see.
Yep, I'll check in with her. She did say 6:30 was.
Okay, so let's move to item B. And I'll ask Counselor Jameson to introduce that topic, which is the audited financial statements from 2344.
Okay, then, the audit committee reviewed the financial statements with our auditor Lawrence Lake. Lake, on 7th of January 2025. A lot of the council members were there and I'm glad to see that. And after a lengthy discussion of the financial statements, the audit committee recommends that council approve the financial statements of the town of Burwick dated March 31st, 2024. If you have any questions, I'll direct you to our staff or Jen or whoever to take any questions about the financial statements. I will say that it was a good meeting and there was a lot of back and forth and opportunities to look at improvements on our audit process in the future. Thank you.
So I guess first we'll ask Lisa if she has any more comments than that or Jennifer on the audit. And then we'll see if there's any questions and then we'll turn that recommendation into a motion and go forward.
Thank you. Just thank you, I guess, to our external auditor Lawrence and his staff for the work that they've helped us, I guess, get through it. And we've had some great dialogue and identified a lot of opportunities where we can make some process improvements, many of which have been implemented. And we're looking forward to continuing with those improvements as well.
Any further comments or questions? It's great to be getting caught up on those and getting this. All right, so Derek, that's your recommendation. We'll take that as a motion you wanted to say again.
Well, just a motion to approve the town of Burwick's financial statements dated March 31st, 2024. And that's, so moved.
Second, Deputy Mayor Loops. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Don't mind. Okay, that's B, which became A, and now we're back to A, which now become D. So you got all of me.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Loops, Crystal is there. Welcome, Crystal, to our meeting.
Thank you.
January 13th, the PAC had their first meeting. And we had the following development agreement, lot 1AC, 5524, 48, and portion of PID 552414.8 put forward as a development agreement. And I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Did you want to share your screen, Crystal?
Yep, I'm just, you don't have sharing on. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk to you about this proposal. Can I just confirm, Krista, that you can see my screen?
Uh, no. I think that's my screen. There we go.
Okay, that's, that's great. Thank you. I was on when you were asking if you saw I was here and then I was shouting at my computer. So I, I don't know what happened, but I was here at the beginning of the meeting. So this is a development agreement. You've seen this before. It's for what we've been referring to as the Bentleylands. The reason you're seeing this again for first reading is the application has been revised. We received a revised site plan in November of 2024. And so it was significant enough that it was referred back to PAC who looked at it last night. And it is now here before you for first reading. So it's in many ways substantially the same. It's the same piece of land, same size. The main difference is between what happened, what you saw previously and what you're seeing now is previously the access was to be off Kathleen Court. This way, the main access. And this was to be, can you see my cursor?
Yes, we can.
Okay, and this was to be an emergency access. After many conversations with the county of Kings, the developer and your Jen and her staff, this didn't end up being able to happen for a variety of reasons. So the development now is proposed to access by Commercial Street. As a result of that change, the developer is also changing the development form. Previously, it was townhouses and two apartment buildings totaling up to 90 units. Now it is proposed to be four apartment, 30-unit apartment buildings totaling 120 units. So it's in an RCDD designation and zone, which means that it must occur, any future development has to occur by development agreement. So this is the land use designation, which is future residential. And this is the zoning map, which is the RCDD, RCDD, which means everything happens by development agreement. And the intent of that zone is to ensure that council and the public have an opportunity to provide detailed input, but also to ensure that the development of this whole RCDD zone is done in a comprehensive manner so that it works together and it maximizes development potential, has good road and pedestrian connections. Infrastructure is, is, is done in such a way to be the most efficient. So as mentioned, you have a site plan that should have been circulated as part of your package. I know this is very difficult to see, but there are four 30-unit apartment buildings proposed in this location, in this location, this location, and this location. This is the connection down to Commercial Street. And this is the connection to Kathleen Drive. The access is down to Commercial Street will be a six-meter-ish driveway connection to Commercial. So will not be a public road. This whole development will be on a series of driveways and will connect to the public street system to Commercial Street and with an emergency access to Kathleen Drive, which is Kathleen Court, which is in their county. This is an aerial shot, so you can kind of get the, a sense of how it works with access out to Commercial Street in this direction and emergency access out to Kathleen Court. You can see Grandview Manor is directly adjacent. And as everyone knows, that it's, construction is underway to replace that facility. The potential target market for the renters here would be, in part, housing for Grandview Manor staff, but also those who may see themselves eventually being in Grandview Manor. Or just, there's not a particular target market, but the developer does see an opportunity. So the 120 units would be in four multi-story buildings. Each building would be a maximum of three stories or a maximum of 40 feet in height. And there's proposed to be 152 surface and underground parking spaces. Primarily, the parking will be underground. This is just another view of the site. The blue areas are the apartment buildings. It's also important to note that there's a stormwater management pond that is existing on the site that helps service Kathleen Court. These sort of cross hatchy dotted areas are amenity space. So they could be grassed areas, they could be landscaped areas. They could have recreational kind of space. I'm determined what that's going to be, but most likely it'll be grassed. And that totals about 12% of the lot. This also is a picture of the, of what it could look like. This is not an exact representation, but it is a rendering for your consideration. So we hear from the developer, it's going to be primarily one and two bedroom units with private balcony, shared laundry facility, some underground parking, and also an elevator. However, the internal configuration is not something that the development agreement addresses. So in terms of policies, you have policy R13, which sets up the RCDD zone and talks about the reasons why you have it, which is about infrastructure and maximizing that. The requirement to have an integrated transportation system and also refers us to the general criteria for development agreements, which are considered, the same criteria considered for all development agreements and rezonings. R9 is the specific policy you need to consider. And that speaks to being generally compatible with existing developments and the design and the site is consistent with existing development. So it's clear that this is a lot of density on the slot. In terms of compatibility, there are a number of low-density, single-unit homes along Commercial Street. However, there is a good distance between this proposed development and those. And Grandview Manor is certainly very consistent with this. It's probably in terms of massing. You know, its massing is more prominent because you can see it more clearly from the street. So there, in the report, there's a discussion of compatibility. Wastewater management, the bottom line here is that there are no concerns around wastewater management. Your municipal engineer taking a look at this development and is satisfied that the municipality, the town, has the capacity to deal with it. One thing to be aware of is that the development is proposed to have a lift station on the site, which will service both its proposed development and Grandview Manor. Stormwater management, if council decides to proceed with the development agreement, a master stormwater drainage plan will be provided at time of permitting. So those details will be sorted out then. But upon review, it is, all indications are that there will be able to balance pre and post stormwater flows. The draft development agreement has a requirement, excuse me, for a traffic study. At this point, we do, we just received a traffic study today and it hasn't been reviewed by the engineer or the traffic authority. However, a quick read of it says that there are no capacity issues. However, we haven't done a deep dive of it yet. However, an acceptable traffic study would have to be provided before the 61st unit is permitted. So what this means is without a traffic study that's been approved and reviewed by the town, the development agreement will only allow the first two apartment buildings. And then any future development permits would be, require a successful transportation study. There's also a requirement in the draft development agreement to connect, for this development to connect to Ron Smith Drive if Ron Smith Drive is connected to within 50 feet of the property line. And at that point, the hope is that Ron Smith Drive would be the main point of access and that the private driveway to Commercial Street would become an emergency access. I did talk a little bit about compatibility, which from a planning perspective is, is an important consideration for council. So the nearest residence is over 50 meters away. Commercial Street is, you know, 155 meters. Ron Smith Drive is 90. And so there is some distance between existing development and this development. It's sort of tucked in behind. And the intention with this development agreement is to maintain the existing tree buffers to the greatest extent possible and add additional landscaping to provide buffering. Groundwater is obviously a significant issue in Burwick. And there is a groundwater study that was completed by the developer. And it concluded that there's no issues for water and there's no immediate threat of a drawdown to the wells of adjacent properties. However, that study only looked at, and I forget how many units. I think it was around 75, now that I think about it. So the development agreement will require an update to that study before any more than 75 units can be built. Also, the town has a tabletop groundwater study, which, which recommended to the town that an additional 500 units could be built without any impact or any, without causing any negative impact to the overall aquifer of the town of Burwick. And at this point, we have not reached that 500 unit limit. We're probably 150 units or something away from it. Parking is proposed at 1.2 spots per acre and staff are comfortable with that. So there was a public information held, meeting held in 2022, which was well-attended. We have not held a public information meeting on this current proposal. But the proposal is of a similar density. And so staff decided not to take it back out to a public information meeting. And that's kind of normal unless there's a completely different proposal. You usually don't hold additional public information meetings. However, notification letters have been sent to neighbors within 100 meters. From that public information meeting, the main issues were about traffic servicing and water supply, which I've addressed in my previous comments. And there's no, no unmanageable issues that have been, when we did the additional study, those issues have been addressed. So the draft development agreement is before you. It received a positive recommendation last night from PAC. We did make a few changes as a result of some of the guidance provided last night. But the main points of this development agreement is that it allows for a private driveway connection to Commercial Street. It requires a master drainage and servicing plan at time of permitting. It allows for the lift station to be subdivided off, heated over to the town at some point in the future whenever it is fully built and it's built to a standard acceptable to the town. It allows for 120 residential units in four buildings, up to three stories. It allows a minimum parking ratio of a 1.25 spaces per unit. It requires a minimum of 10% open space. And it has landscaping requirements to deal with compatibility issues. As a result of the PAC meeting last night, additional clauses were added. So in your document you have tonight, hopefully you can see, it's in color. And you can see that there's some words in red. Those were added since PAC last night, so you know what the difference is. So there's traffic calming and signage along a private driveway. There was, PAC offered some comments about how do you ensure safety of people walking along that private driveway. So traffic calming and signage were, were something that, that we added in there. And those details will be determined at time of permitting. It enables subdivision to create a public street if at some point in the future Kathleen Court is able to connect to an extended Ron Smith Drive. So it allows for that to become a public street if they can meet the municipal specifications. And there's a requirement for a gate at Kathleen Court. That would be emergency access only. And there was a concern about short cutting. So the way to deal with short cutting is to put a significant and substantial gate there. And your public works folks have some ideas about what that will look like. And we've put specific language in there. So in terms of process, for just, and this is just the revised application. We received the revised site plan on November 26th, where PAC looked at it last night, made a positive recommendation. You're here at first reading. The next step, if you decide to proceed to a public hearing, will be to hold a public hearing, which is tentatively set for some time in probably February. And then you need to do second reading after that. And then there's a 14-day appeal period that comes subsequent to that. So PAC made, staff made this recommendation to PAC that the development agreement be forwarded to first reading. PAC made this motion last night. And Jen, I'm assuming that there's a motion that you would like put on the floor.
Yes, there is. And we can deal with some questions of Crystal first, then we'll go to the motion. And if required, we'll have any further discussion of council under the motion. So questions from anybody at the table to Crystal regarding this?
Just a couple of questions. One is, is the pond that is just off to the, I believe, right? Is, I just want a clarification, is that within town boundaries? Or is that within municipality of County of Kings?
That is within the county of Kings. Oh, sorry, the town of Burwick. And there's an easement provided to the county of Kings because the Kathleen Court uses that as part of their stormwater management.
And that brings me to the second question, which is related to the access to Commercial Street. And I understand that the sewer lines will be, and from the lift station will be running underneath that access. And would that have an easement with it as well?
So that will be determined at time of permitting exactly how the servicing is going to work. I think they do know at this point, but I don't have those details in front of me. But any, if there's a requirement for the town to have maintenance or access to that, there will have to be easements. So easements are a requirement in those situations.
Thank you.
Counselor.
With the change in this development, will it no longer affect that traditional snowmobile trail that runs through the old forest there?
So I think you're talking about the trail that we talked about last night, Mayor Trenacity. That kind of, is that what we're talking about?
I believe so, and it's not near that property. So at this point, it doesn't impact that. What it does impact is perhaps the future act of, the act of transport open to have that went from the top of that at Kathleen Court across to Commercial Street. Because there won't be on the roadway in, not roadway.
Private drive.
Private drive. There won't be room for a sidewalk at this point, only perhaps later when it connects with Ron Smith. So that peacefully.
The trail will still be.
Well, that trail will be still there. And that, that land is, that's on MacArthur's property, the lower end. And then that will be, you know, see what happens when, when and if he does his, how that could be impacted.
Not really a question, just a spelling error on 4.2.2 that was just handed in. It just says Ron Hill, it should say Ron Smith Drive.
Get that fixed now so that we don't have to do it later.
Crystal pointed that out last night. She knew she had it in there somewhere.
I found it in my presentation. I can, yeah, so thank you, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's entertain a motion then on that. Are we able to bring it back up on the screen so I can see it and read it? Same before, okay? Crystal, did you hear that? Are you able to put that motion up?
So I don't know, Jen, if you have a motion for council or you want me to prepare a motion. I didn't prepare a motion.
Before she went on to her screen again.
I can share the motion that we have that says that council forward the draft development agreement for lot 1 slash AC Commercial Street to a public hearing and the date's to be determined. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Sgrino.
Mayor Trenacity, can I suggest a little amendment to that motion? Because we made changes since PAC, if you could say the draft development agreement as amended would be appropriate.
Thank you, and that's, we're fine with that. Just make that adjustment to motion, please. Okay? Any further discussion on this one? Going a little quicker than did last night, thank you. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion's carried. Thank you very much. And Crystal, thank you for joining us and unless you really want to.
No, I'm leaving. Thank you. Meeting.
And we will be dealing with approval of the development officer appointment a little later.
Okay, wonderful. All right, thank you. Bye-bye.
Ask if we could discuss the date for the public hearing.
Oh.
Crystal, we've already talked through it.
Okay. Okay, well, before we move on then, so typically it's at our, would be at our next council meeting. Crystal's not available, right?
No, Crystal is available. So the, sometimes we have our public hearings on the evening before, but the evening before is another accessibility advisory committee meeting. We've also had them before our regular council meetings. So the question that I would ask council is if we had it before council meeting, I did not check your schedule before coming.
And I do not have it here, so I checked before I came, but was dealing with other things, so.
Because it will be a long meeting because we're in budget. So if we were to have the public hearing the same night as council. So if we were to have the public hearing the same night as counsel, I would ask if there's any consideration to start the meeting at 6:00 PM as opposed to 6:30. And has the public hearing happen from 6:00, 6:30, and then the regular meeting start at 6:30? And that would be the fault of February 11th, our next council meeting, which is the 11th.
So Deputy Mayor Loops and Counselor Walsh on this one, they're typically the ones that have.
My schedule's up in there, I had changes to it today, which is beyond my control, so.
You're not sure.
So I'm not sure, so I don't have my schedule properly. But if you guys set a date, I can let you know tomorrow.
Yeah. I can try, I just can't guarantee based on, based on if I'm still stuck in the office on the way back in, so.
And the problem with these, Eric, correct, if we're not at that meeting, then we cannot vote. And that's why we've always said 6:30 again, it's still hard for me. But better for Ty because you could lose out to two counselors, I can't vote.
Just, was just checking because as you saw the agenda tonight, the agenda on the 11th will also be pretty heavy with the budget. The other option would be to hold a special council, or a public hearing and special council meeting on another evening. The reason I'm not recommending to wait until the committee of the whole meeting because then it delays the appeal process and decision for grand view manner.
And if it's the 11th, I can tell you already that I'm not able to come early that day. I know that because I checked it for one of Derek's proposed dates for audit, so.
And I believe the third Tuesday of the month has already been set for the community development committee meeting. So it would have to be a need.
Third, the 18th of February, right?
Which is the third Tuesday of the month.
Yeah.
So it would have to be a meeting night other than a Tuesday.
But don't rule it up on the 11th, just for me.
Well, I think we want to try to make sure that, so again, if it's on committee behold, then we're a whole other middle of the month before it's approved.
I'm thinking committee the whole of January, but we have budget stuff as well that night, okay.
So unless we're gonna have it earlier, it might make sense.
We can't have it any earlier than the 10th of February.
That's right, that's right, for advertising purposes, it has to be 14 days.
Are we willing to look at a Thursday night? Possibility is that.
Definitely.
So could we put the Thursday night, whether it's that week, which seems 13th? Does that work? Can you check and see if that works for Crystal as well? Jennifer's work for you?
Works for me.
Are we counting on that, like, mayor meeting to be a longer meeting? Is it?
The public hearing you mean?
Yeah, the public hearing.
We have no idea. So there, one of the property owners that's in front of that property had contacted the town with some concerns when earth was being moved on the property. So at this point, we don't have any indication of whether there will be multiple members of the public who will come or not. We're not thinking that it will be as large as some of our other ones. So holding it before a council meeting would be acceptable. But if it does end up being a long meeting, we just didn't want to be here till 11 o'clock discussing.
Yeah. Can we technically tie that, check with Crystal, the 13th and see if that works? And it may be an opportunity if we need to have any more conversation on budget other than our regular schedule, we might be able to prepare.
Does, does 6:30 work? More so, I know Adam's schedule has changed.
Only if I'm off.
Okay.
Otherwise, no, because right.
Can you let her know tomorrow about that date?
Yes. I might easily let you know tonight because I think only one DPD, Derek said he works. So like, I'll know when I go back to his meeting if that was one of the dates.
So we'd have to make sure you're there, we would switch the time to 7:15 and make it you there for that.
Probably there, yeah.
Okay, all righty. Okay, thank you for that. So now we are on to the stormwater management. And you have a document there in front of you, and I'm gonna turn this over to Aaron, who's gonna introduce it. Just excuse me, Courtney, go ahead. Can you people hear him? Should we ask him to turn around a little bit more then, just so they can catch you here?
That makes it a lot better, I mean, we keep, we're hearing the whole conversation.
Yes.
I realize you're coughing, and we understand.
We can, we can scooch down a little bit, or get a little closer, Lisa. Do you want to?
Okay, so the recommendation is that counsel award the work scope as outlined in BER 2024-017, Town of Berwick Stormwater Management Plan to CBCL for the contract amount of $94,995 excluding HST. So the Town of Berwick issued a stormwater management plan, RFP, on the 1st of November. We were seeking bids from qualified proponents for the creation of a stormwater management plan that we could use to inform capital priorities that consider our aging infrastructure, forecasted changes to land use, as well as climate change. Tender closed on the 20th of December. We received seven tender responses. And the tender responses were evaluated according to the evaluation criteria that was outlined in the RFP itself. I'm not going to go through all of the numbers on there, but at the very bottom of the table, you can see the ranking. CBCL ranked with the highest score overall. Dylan was number two, Stantec was number three, and so forth. This request seeks approval to award the work to the highest court proponent according to the tender evaluation criteria. All other requirements within the tender were fulfilled in their submission, which was reviewed in detail with the town engineer. Financially, this work was approved in the current capital budget for 2024, 25, and is within the expected amount of this portion of the work. This work is also 50% funded by a provincial capital assistance program grant.
So, Aaron, any questions? We'll entertain some questions or Counselor James.
Just a question, what special capabilities or capacities does CBCL have? You know, if you look at it from the standpoint of, of who's the lowest tender. I understand that you can rate them and rank them on different qualities and components. And I've done it myself. However, I would expect to hear a few special talents that they would have that would give you the satisfaction to move forward.
So CBCL had a good knowledge, they have good knowledge and experience of the actual town of Berwick itself. CBC, CBCL has been involved in the design of Foster Street, Commercial Street, Cottage Street. And they're currently working the design of a portion of Maple Avenue from a conceptual standpoint. So they know, they know our road system, which gives them a slight understanding of things like our topography. They have experience with light our image, imagery of the town itself. And they have some experience already, not just field-based experience, but GIS and mapping experience with some of our storm infrastructure already. They've performed similar work scopes for Charlestown, Kentville, and Woodville. They, they have a very good understanding of our project requirements when you read their actual response. Their response itself was quite detailed. They're, they've included five days of field survey, surveying where they'll bring a surveyor to town to actually look at some of our pipes and our open ditches and to take measurements to then inform their mapping. They offered to meet with our field staff. Once they built their models and they ran simulations, they then offered to circle back with their field staff to check based on field-based observations to serve as a way to calibrate their model. They've also offered to perform flood simulations, looking at what's generally considered a five-year peak rain event versus a 10-year versus a 20-year, up to 100 years. So we received several different flood simulations that we could use to inform any stormwater changes we make. Finally, they, they were able, they committed to our timeline. They're able to actually perform the work according to the timeline we requested. And they're also willing to come and present to counsel following the completion of the work, which will save me some. So they, one thing that was noted too, we, in the tender document itself, we stated that town staff would be available to meet as companies were working on their proposals. And CBCL was one of the companies that actually came to town and spent half a day, not just meeting in the office, but driving around town to start looking at some of the issues. So it suggested that they have a good interest in the work. A final thing, sorry, they were, of the seven different responses we received, some were very civil engineering focused, others were very asset management focused. One of them was written by a planning company similar to Brighter Communities. So it didn't really focus from an engineering standpoint, it looked more at land use and planning in the future. So looking at these, these different proposals that we received, CBCL most matched what we were looking for. The other proponents had some really cool ideas that would be really useful, but they weren't necessarily going to give us something that could inform our capital budget for the next five to 10 years. And all the other stuff would be really great to have, but what we really need right now is something to inform our, our budget priorities. Thank you, that clarifies it for me, thank you very much.
I know that was a long explanation.
No.
So Aaron, I appreciate that explanation. So those items that you listed though were above and beyond what any of the other companies were gonna do? Because that clearly was a good list of, none of the others were.
Dylan was a very close second. Dylan has, Dylan has very good knowledge of the Cornwallis watershed. Because in 2023, they did work for Kentville and with the province, looking at the entire Cornwallis River to look at flood potential. They also, they, they offered similar work scope to what CBCL offered in the sense that they were going to come to town for multiple days of field survey, model creation. They didn't talk about how they were going to calibrate their model. They, they cited that because they have existing experience with the river, they would need to calibrate the model. And when you look at some of the modeling they've done for the province and for Kentville, and how it visually relates to Berwick, I would suggest there's some discrepancies in there. Particularly when you look at Main Street. So calibrating the model was something that was kind of a concern to me. They also weren't clear on what they were going to do after they submitted a report. Something we had asked for was presentation to staff and the council. They kind of stopped at sending us a report and they were finished. They also started, they, they had some, it wasn't necessarily clear what work scope was going to be included in their price because they started pouring other things out for additional pricing. So it felt like they could do some very good work, it would be a very good product for, for us, but it wasn't necessarily going to turn out on budget.
Any other? I have one more, you say they met, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I do have a question. And I know that there's a lot of public interest in this work. Is there within the proposal, any public engagement at all? Because I know a lot of people live along that, Main Street in particular are really interested in.
That's a, that's a very good question, and I, I don't recall if CBCL had that either. Some companies had public engagement and others didn't. I, I know, I recall some companies that didn't have it, but I don't remember who else had it.
Because I think, you know, based on just sort of what I heard at the doorstep, that's going to be an important component to engage at some level so that people feel they've been heard and listened to. And, and I know all your, your gaffings or what we should do kind of product, but I think that's the point that public wants to.
I think we could, we had, we had outlined in there that we would like a presentation to staff as well as a presentation to counsel. So that would be coming to town to do two separate and distinct presentations. If their proposal doesn't mention public engagement, we could look at turning one of those into a town hall or a fireside presentation where we open it up.
That, that sounds like a good condition we asked them. And so we could do the council staff one as one and do the second one or the first one as a, as a public council.
Just have one other question, that was, have we used both Dylan or any of these companies before historically? Do we have a record of their capabilities?
So we, I'll start with Dylan. We use Dylan frequently for several years now, probably ways from our side. They're very familiar with our collection system and our wastewater treatment. The wastewater treatment plant and, and how it performs, performs and how it should perform. But that's really the extent of Dylan's experience within Berwick. CBCL is a company we use more for gray civil engineering projects like roads or, or plumbing. So CBCL has very good knowledge, working knowledge of Foster Street, Beckwith, Cottage, Commercial. And we're working with them right now on a concept for Maple Avenue. So from a civil engineering standpoint, CBCL is quite well-rounded. They know the town quite well. They've mentioned that over the course of their work for Foster, Cottage, Commercial, and Maple, they essentially have a lot of their modeling already built, the base modeling that they just need to really import rain events into to run, so. Yeah, I'm feeling quite good about CBCL.
You've answered my question.
Thank you. There, there's other companies, all, all seven bids were very good, the, the end product would be very good. CBCL really looks like they're gonna give us something that's calibrated. And, and because of their existing experience and understanding the roadwork we need to do in the future within town, I think it's gonna integrate very well from a capital standpoint.
Any further questions? Aaron, I have one, you mentioned that they meet the timeline. What is the timeline? When would we expect them to be started and completed?
They would, they would start very soon, this month. Completion mid, late July, presentation to council in September.
Okay, if there's no further questions of Aaron, we'll entertain the motion and then see if there's any further discussion after we have the motion. Counselor Jameson and. Oh, it's on the screen now, okay.
A council award the work scope as outlined in BER 2024-017, Town of Berwick Stormwater Management Plan to CBCL for the contract amount of $94,995 excluding HST.
Thank you. And just before, we, do we need to make any amendment to the, that, referring to that meeting combo change there? If we talked about, or do you think that's, it's been a discussion with them?
I think it can be direction, but if it comes back as being more, then we would have to come back to council for approval to increase the cost.
Okay, so we'll leave the motion as is, and then if there's more from them regarding that, then we'll have to entertain that. Okay, second please, Counselor Carter. All right, any further discussion? Clear on that, clear on what we're gonna ask for addition or change? Let's not call it an addition, in order to say it's addition, it's just a slight change, a very, very slight change. Yeah, clear, yeah. All right, so all those in favor say aye. All right, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And any country-minded, our motion is carried. Okay. Now we're going to move on to D, which is Little Night Marsters Avenue, an unsightly property update, and I. I know some of the councils from the previous term will be, will be glad to see that we're getting to this point. We've worked considerably long on this and we made a number of concessions early on and some discussions and negotiations with him. Around that, we're at the point now where. That did not. Need to be successful. So I, I can turn it over to Jennifer. She has perhaps more detail on the dates and times and those pieces and. We're proceeding with that.
Thank you. So I didn't have time before this meeting to put this into a report, but I can. Now that I've compiled it, can put that in if you would like to see all the dates, but this really dates back to. Twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, probably one of the first unsightly complaints that I heard as. When I started here with the town. So we officially made some progress by sending a letter to the property owner in September of twenty twenty-three. And it was more of a, we've received a complaint under the Municipal Government Act for unsightly premises. We would ask that you tidy up your lawn and remove any derelict vehicles. And that they would have four weeks to do that. Before we followed up and no progress was made, so. We continue to receive lots of complaints. And based on receiving no response from the property owner, we brought in order to council to. Have, to be placed on. The property, that they would have to remove the. Vehicles or the town would do it and then put the charge back as a lien on the property. And so council makes that decision under the Municipal Government Act since we don't have a policy that designates the authority to myself or committee. So council did make that order on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And it was posted to the property and sent to registered mail. Giving the property owner forty-five days to clean the property up. They also had seven days to appeal council's order to council. The property owner came in and spoke to me requesting an extension, which they were granted on November thirtieth. And then they submitted a letter appealing the order on December seventh and requested to speak to council. The property owner presented to council on December twelfth, requesting that the order be overturned based on. The prop or the vehicles being collector items for the individual, doing some work on them. And council upheld the, or not upheld, overturned the order and. Directed myself to work with the property owner to find appropriate storage for the vehicles by the end of perhaps twenty twenty-four. So in twenty twenty-four, in March. We reached out to the property owner by phone a number of times, never heard anything, so we sent a registered letter. Requesting a date to meet. The deputy, the mayor, deputy mayor at the time and I. Met with the property owner on April fifteenth. So we were past council's date, but you, we kept you up to date that we were still working with the property owner. We met with the owner to discuss acceptable storage and concealment options, which if you were. Expressed such as a fence around the property to conceal the vehicles. The property owner wanted to see or wanted to build some type of storage for the vehicles and we asked him to reach out to Krista. To receive a development permit application. If it was a fence, didn't need one, and we followed up in four weeks. You will notice there's a trend of meeting timelines here from both the. Property owner and the town because this is a. Service that is done off the side of myself and Krista's desk. When Krista was hired as the Bylaw Planning Administrative Coordinator. There might have been time to do some of the investigative work when it comes to dangerous and unsightly premises. However. When our executive coordinator left, Krista took on a hundred percent of that role as well. And so Bylaw. Enforcement has really been a, when we have time for it, sort of service. So we didn't follow up in those four weeks. We did reach back out in August twenty twenty-four to. Indicate that we've been trying to get a hold of the property owner. And that we've also noticed that additional vehicles and construction debris have been piling up on their property. And we requested proof of registration and insurance for the vehicles that were on the property. Because that is one of the definitions of derelict vehicle is if it doesn't have registration approval and insurance. To date, we have not received any response from the property owner. So we did send registered mail because we were not having. We continue to not have luck with phone. So that brings us. Over a year of work and no progress has been made. So one of the recommendations we're providing tonight or looking for direction from council. Is for staff to prepare a recommendation for an order. That would identify X number of vehicles as long as they do have proof of registration. And are stored on the hard surface, not on the lawn of the property. And bring that back in February with a request for council to approve that order. And if there's any other. Things that we find out through that process, we could add to the recommendation, but that's. Sort of the high level of it is find a compromise between allowing some vehicles, but ensuring that they're stored properly on the, on the property. And not on grass area and maybe find a, a limit. We have. Reached out to some other municipalities, but not received any responses on whether they have limits for cars or vehicles. On their properties.
It's a bit complicated because he refers to the cars being there as his hobby and he's constantly working. On them and making them roadworthy and, and. As a, and the tractor items and some of those kinds of issues, which, you know, we've asked them for some proof that they can. Move and that they're, you know, that they're not. And we get complaints that. Not only are they not particularly roadworthy. There's also additional parts and things piling up associated or maybe not even associated. With his hobby of collecting and, and bearing cars. So. I think that's why one of the things that we need to do is be a bit more specific with him about. What may be a collector item and a legitimate hobby working with the car versus. What might be junk piled there that is really unsightly. So it's, I think that's why it's important that we. We give it. Not necessarily more time, but because we've given them lots of time, but it's about being specific with. With what is acceptable, what's not. It's going to take a little bit of staff time and work to generate that because this, this stuff doesn't. But we can't go to the block and find out the list of unsightly requirements. It's just not. There's a lot of, there's a bit of discretion on some of that. Yeah.
There's a long list of what unsightly is, but it's all discretionary. And I think in order to be efficient and effective with. Enforcement of it, council will really need to at some point dig into what they feel is acceptable. To enforce and what is civil issues between property owners. In this case, I think there is a role for the town to play, but there might be other. Instances with some of the unsightly complaints that we continue to receive. That may not be something that the town needs to spend a lot of time on. Particularly backyard unsightly complaints.
This will be staff's opportunity to look into where we may go with more detailed policy around this and that kind of stuff. Bit of a genesis of kind of some exploring and research a bit that.
But to, yes, but just want to caution that we're not bringing back the full policy on the eleventh. It will really just be for this one specific property, but it will set some precedent for what may come forward as a policy in the future.
And you'll have that back by the recording back to council everywhere. This is going to be happening in a reasonable time. So this is not so much a motion, but a, a direction to staff to do that, but. Comments, thoughts? What do people think about, about this? I'm sure somebody may have heard about it in your fall travels.
It's an issue that has to be addressed. There's no option here. It will, it will get more and if we don't do something now.
And I, I suspect as well that if we don't deal with this in a way that is effective. It will really hamper opportunities to, to. Impact other properties that are. I'm, I'm trying to understand that the recommendation that you're putting forward. Does that mean that if the. Vehicles that aren't movable, aren't registered, aren't insured, would then have to be moved or so that? Okay. So you have the, you will, would have made a difference?
Correct. And I think that we'll get some legal opinion on whether. You know, if they had two vehicle, or if he has a vehicle that he's using to work on. But there's that vehicle plus two others. Is that acceptable to be in the driveway versus five? Registered usable cars that can't fit within. The driveway. Like there's a bit of a balancing act that we will have to find and present to council some. Considerations, but essentially to clean up the yard and to try to remove. Those that aren't being worked on or used and. Hopefully that the property owner would find storage elsewhere. Otherwise, we're the ones removing them to a place that. They would then have to pay again to have moved to where they want them to be.
I'm happy with the proposal. These, these are. There are a number of ones there that I would not classify. Although you could get them classified as antiques, but I have not seen any antique registration plates on them. Usually when someone has an antique car. They take great pride in it, in it, and pride in the value. Pride of what happened versus just letting it sit there year after year.
If I may make one more comment. This is a particularly hard property because it is a corner lot. And you can see it from more angles than a yard that you only see really the front yard. This will set a precedent in the town about vehicles on properties and. We will need to be careful about what we do decide because there probably are properties in town. That appear to be single-family dwelling units that if they have. Two-parent household or with. Four kids of driving age and they all have vehicles, like those are things that. Is why this probably isn't car limits in other municipalities because you're then saying what is. Reasonable for a family or household to own. So. We will have to tread lightly, but I think it's the drivable, registered, insurable piece on where. We're going to find success versus the number of cars. But just to point that out.
So we'll look forward to the proposal on the eleventh and then we can. Make comments about the particulars in that and then, and then go from there. And then we'll have a. So.
Parts and parts of vehicles often become aggressive restorers. Value asset as well. So you may want to just keep that in mind that. You know, someone may have the front end of one car. I go back to Johnny Cash and his forty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty-nine Cadillac that he, that he built over. Over his career of working there at the plant. So just keep that in mind, parts. They come into play here and should impress those as well.
That's a great point. And one of the things that we did talk about with the property owner that was never saw in addition was if they had in another. Storage, they do have a garage on site. I don't know what's in the garage or if there's available space to store anything. But if there were parts that could be stored in a garage to get them out of the way, it's really the. There is some concerns from residents about environmental on the property. But it's also about containment as well. So I think that's a great point about the.
All right, we're good. All right, item E. This is our first boo at our draft operating budget. Just a couple of. Well, we could do that. Could be a little eerie after that, but it's not. Let's do that. This suggests we switch F to E and E becomes F and that. So. We'll move to the Development Officer appointment. Yes, so we. Jennifer, do you want to speak to this time?
Sure, this is a housekeeping issue or, yep, housekeeping item. So. We are required to appoint development officers to be able to review development applications for the town. And you can appoint more than one development officer. And we currently have Crystal Fuller and John Sutherland with Brighter Community Planning and. Ling? Ning? Ning is, oh, Ning, yes, is a new. Employee with Brighter Communities or newer employee who we're looking to appoint to help with. Development permit applications and help with the workload. Since that was keeping you to your point.
And we have motion there. Can I, anybody want to make that motion for us? Counselor Serino. And second, my counsel Walsh, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion's carried. Okay, okay, good. All right. So we're on to. Do our information report on our budget. And just before we turn it over to. Who, at least I guess, is going to take us through this. And staff are going to present their pieces. This is, this time of year, this process is probably one of the toughest, more stressful. Times is in your council year. I mean, it's. We'll go through a number of versions of this. And it changes and it needs to change as we go. We have tough decisions to make. Then we'll hear from the public, which will add a little bit more pressure and discussion and thought into this. So. I just want to share that with you as we go forward. That you're going to see a new number of versions of this and numbers change. So. Tonight is version one, and I understand already from Jennifer, there are changes and there's a multiple changes. So. They'll be reflected in version two when we get there. There's some higher level decisions we need to make and there, there's specific numbers in there. That we'll discuss and, and will be changing. So. We have to kind of, and it's a, it's an extensive process. This is not, not. We're not going to make any motions on this budget by any means tonight. You're going to see a few, few of times. We have to be patient and work. Our way through this process. So I just wanted to share that with you. I've been through many of these. Some of them, some years, it's a, it's almost been pleasant, but most of them are not. Because it's tough work that we're doing. So I'll leave it at that. Please keep that in mind when you're thinking about this. Don't lose any sleep over it tonight. There's plenty of time.
That may come later.
Yeah. But at this point, you know, we'll begin the process and then we'll see how it evolves. So having. Said that, I'm ready to turn it over to, correctly, Lisa, Jennifer, do you have anything? Nope.
No.
As long as we find it, we're going to boot her up here.
Did I say the middle right spot? Prep file. It's called twenty twenty-five, twenty-six draft.
It's called twenty twenty five twenty six draft operating budget version one. Oh, you were just on it.
It was right there.
Nope, two, three down, I think.
And just one other point as we go through the presentation, we will stop kind of department wise and have some conversation, discussion with each with each one of them when we get there. So we don't need to wait the end of the questions. We will deal kind of with that as we go, so.
All right, so the information report has been circulated and staff has prepared and will speak to tonight this presentation. This will also be uploaded to the Berwick website and we can also save a copy within councils folder as well for reference as you're going through things. Sue, next slide please. And so this is the proposed budget process and timeline. So in December, staff started to compile the budget. So both the operating and the capital. And this was essentially prepared utilizing means that staff are aware of continuing the priorities that our council had established through the previous term, attempting to incorporate a lot of the feedback that our current council here shared about what was heard on the street as well. And yeah, so that brings us to this evening. We're presenting draft one of the operating budget. You will then find draft one of the capital budget coming forward on January the twenty eighth, followed by a public information session, which will be held in the Tiananmen Gym on February the third. February eleventh, we'll come back to council to present back any feedback we've heard from the public and also the draft to the operating budget with any revisions which have come by way of council's direction or also any known information that we've received to date. The twenty fifth, we'll bring back version two of the capital budget, again, using information that we've received from council and known information by that time to drive that version. Draft three will bring back both operating and capital budgets. The goal by that is, you know, we're kind of narrowing down and getting closer to where council is comfortable at approving a budget. And there's an opportunity to approve the budget on March twenty fifth, both the capital and operating. But again, this is just a proposed timeline to kind of help us from a staffing perspective and council to stay on track and work collaboratively toward approval of the twenty five twenty six operating budget and a five year capital investment plan. So a quick note here on our assessment. So you'll likely hear, you know, within the community assessments are starting to arrive today. So we've updated our assessment rule here within the town. So our total residential capital, or I'm sorry, taxable with cap has increased approximately seven percent. Our total taxable commercial has decreased by two point two percent. The main driver is that there was an appeal during twenty twenty four in which the commercial property was successful with that appeal and that did reduce the overall assessment value. And our resource has had a slight decrease. So overall, it's an increase in our taxable assessment of six point one. And if we recall, and for those that are new, the province, the PBSC establishes cap and that is based on CPI. So this year, cap assessment is based at one point five percent as opposed to the previous year where it's three point two. So certainly not the growth that we have seen previous in the last couple of years. So using our assessment, our taxable assessment, one cent on the tax rate total equivalent is twenty four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. So if council made the decision to increase the tax rate by one cent, that would increase the tax revenue by just shy of twenty five thousand dollars or just over twenty four. The commercial component of that is just shy of three thousand dollars, whereas the residential component is twenty one thousand. So sometimes council may make the decision to increase the commercial mill rate. So if you were to increase that one cent, you would recognize just shy of three thousand dollars in additional revenue. And the same, you know, if you were to decrease it, you would decrease it by one cent and that would be a reduction in revenue by three thousand. And the same would apply for the residential. So at the bottom of the slide, we have an example. So if a property last year that was a residential property under cap was assessed at two thousand and eight thousand, this year that property still under cap because it hasn't been sold, the assessment value would be just over two hundred and eleven thousand if we were to apply the existing tax rate. So no changes at all. That would be an increase to that individual's annual tax bill of forty eight dollars for the year.
You sent this to me, but I didn't update it. So sixty eight percent of our assessment, residential assessment accounts are capped. So sixty eight percent of residential properties will see no more if the tax rate stays the same of an increase to their tax bill of one point five percent.
Just before we continue on, so on the twenty eighth of January, Paul Beasley from the PBSC will be attending our meeting and he'll do a presentation to council on the assessment, kind of a generalized assessments for the province. We'll provide an update there and he'll also provide a specific update to Berwick's role itself. So he's fantastic. We like to have him in annually to provide that presentation and answer any questions that council may have. And I did just want to pause and see if there were any questions at this point because we're kind of talking about the assessment component and taxation piece before we continue on.
Counselor Walsh, sorry, I still yours first. And this is my my symbolism for I have a half thought.
Okay.
And I know how much everybody loves when I use that term. But I I'm loving your your presentation or the visualness of it. I I do kind of wish we got it a little bit earlier just because I would have loved to have made like just a few notes on there. Can we go back a slide or so to to the process? No, can't. Such permanent stuff. So I I just want to, oh, yeah, actually the first, yeah, one of the balls and the things. So I I just maybe wanted to throw a stone in your pond of the the budget process and timeline. And just through my experience in the last few years, I I find that when we take to the public version two, it's too soon. I I have this because in version two, we're still very much still working on ourselves. Like version one is usually like the the very basics. Version two is after we've had, you know, sort of like first glance to be able to play with it. And then we're still seeing what our problems are. Version three, we're kind of a little bit more comfortable because then we've put a few more fixes in there. But when we take version two to the public, and not that the public doesn't have the opportunity to to, you know, now watch this after online or show up like our loyal fans over here. But when we when we present version number two, there's still, to me, that in that timeline, there's still so much angst into what the town is doing with our finances. And we're almost ready to have version three almost every time that we do this when we put out version two. But the numbers that are up in front are version two, and that makes people quite anxious because they don't understand that version three is also right there. If if that makes any sense, I'm going back. Nope, not at all. Okay, I'm sorry. You've been here, you know what I mean too.
Well, I kind of do know what you mean, but yeah, that what I'm saying is, so is version, they're really almost there and.
It's a little closer is is what I'd say. Like, I mean, I feel like in my experience in the last, because this is, we're going to three budgets together here. And and I just feel like version two, there's still that. Everybody is a bit apprehensive because we're still looking at early numbers and we're still getting a few more numbers that are coming in from some of the other IMSAs and what else is going on in the province and area and so on. And I I just feel like it's early and I know that we try and gear everything up so that we can, you know, start fiscal year for April first and here we are looking at March twenty fifth, so you can't get much closer than. But I I do, I feel that version two is too early to put out. And I I just I feel that the timeline there. I mean, nobody wants to go back to like the horror of, you know, when we were approving our budgets in summertime. My my favorite story myself is being at like the Shelburne Islands campground and approving a budget from sitting outside of like the only place with wifi and the old campground at the registration desk where the door was locked and I was in thirty three degree heat and not enough bandwidth to show my video just to be able to tune in and say aye. But this is, it's a very tight timeline. I know we're always on a tight timeline every year and I know that after an election, it's probably even a tighter timeline. But it's it's that taking version two. I I feel like it puts an extra amount of pressure on the public and on council and on staff, but if there is a way to maneuver that in some way so that we're not going straight with version two, that we have a few more answers, I I think that works in our favor. And once again, we're not we're not delaying any access to anybody being able to see the budget because it's still very up and apparent online and as our discussions. But but making the public presentation based on version two, I I just feel leads into a lot more problems than what we have to feed into.
Yes.
So I guess on the flip side of that, we did have some comments last year that people felt like they were engaged early enough in the process. So I'm open to whatever and look for council's direction on when we'd like to have that because we do seem to get the squeaky wheels making all different kinds of comments around it.
So in terms of known versus assumptions, I would say that there's not, it's not going to get any better for some of these IMSA organizations. Like, I think it's particularly Kings, Transit and Valley Waste under their IMSA agreements, they've already presented draft approved budgets by their boards. The ones that we might get a little bit better on but could be worse on is the education formula and the RCMP. So I don't think that those are going to make a huge difference whether it's version one or version two. I think the piece where the public has always, I think Lisa's comment about we've gotten it early and maybe the numbers or council hasn't provided direction on what you would like to see, so there's too many options for the public, so you don't feel that you have narrowed down some of those expenses at this table before they're presented to the public versus being too late and feeling like the public didn't have any input. I don't know where you want to fall on that. I think we're looking for feedback from council on it. I would say, though, that it will be very important and one thing that I have expressed to Mayor Trinacity is that there we're trying to make sure that between this meeting and version two and what goes to the public information session is that we get clear direction on things that you don't want to be in there. So if you know before, you don't need public input to say, we don't need to see this in the budget, like those are the clear direction. And maybe what's needed as well is an extra meeting of council to understand some of the expenses where we're new council to understand maybe where some of them are driven from.
Yeah, just just to respond, and I think that's all very valid, I think all of it. I I just know one thing in particular that usually we end up taking a lot of heat on is is sort of some of those things that like we have listed priorities and have put down as like a wish list and we're still really in that phase a lot when it comes to version two. A lot of the wishes die by the time we get to version three.
So there are no wishes in this budget.
Yeah, I mean, survival is still a wish too, right? But so I I, yeah, as I say, I.
Very few, I shouldn't say. Council might feel those are wishes that we think are requirements, but.
Yeah. So yes, okay, I I would agree that maybe another, because we we used to in previous budget planning too, we used to have workshops of of council for budgeting too, and that might be helpful.
I would be more than happy to have a workshop. I just don't feel like they give in enough direction to know what is accomplished at the workshop. Since I've been here, we've talked about workshops, but I haven't been given what is done at a workshop to assist the process. I would, though, maybe ask the mayor, I think Council Walsh has brought up some really good points, and maybe when we get to the end of this presentation, you might feel differently or be able to provide direction whether you still feel it's too soon in the process or too late in the process. Maybe I'm just, I think that there's not as many decision points as there has been in previous years. So maybe you have a different opinion at the end of this on where for the rest of council to have exception where that public information meeting should fit.
I'll accept that as we're still in the half thought mode.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a valid thought and I don't know what the solution is because I think both Director Buck and you have highlighted there's pros and cons to coming out too early or too late. And I don't, I I'm not providing, I'm trying to provide information to help you make a decision. I'm not trying to tell you which one is right in that case.
Any other comments on this, council members?
The more you go to the public, the better is just my my comment. The second main question that I had was, we've had growth and development within the town and I see the assessments are up there and the change in assessments are up there. Is there a way that we can look at what the growth in the town has impacted those assessments? Is there a way to look at that?
So we do have number of dwellings, is that what you're referring to?
Looking at number of dwellings, you know, some of it will be the one point five percent increase on cap for the close to eight percent on on residential properties. But there will be a number like the the New Grandview Manor. Is that included in there or how much of that is included? And there have been probably twelve houses or thirteen houses that have gone up in town, maybe more than that, plus a couple duplexes. How much growth have we seen from that and how has that impacted on our assessment?
So it's really difficult to pull that information. So I've been trying to get PBSC to help provide it. And there is a lag in timing between our building permits and the county and then when they're hitting that to provide that growth based on the new builds or.
Or even new instructions, additions.
New construction.
But we do mission building permits. We do, we do. They set out their assessment on what has happened so far as of December first, as I recall.
That's correct.
So there must be an opportunity for us to say, okay, the town is growing, we're increasing assessment and it's not just the long term residents that are feeling the pain, but we're feeling mitigation of that as a result of our growth and development within town.
So can we ask Mr. Beasley to bring that information to us on the twentieth of January? Give him some heads up that this is what we're looking for and he can either direct us to how we find it or bring it along.
We can try, but we can also try internally to identify, yeah, through building permits. Because we don't issue the building permits, they're issued by the County of Kings and to date, we don't get copies of occupancy permits when they're submitted to the province. This is again an issue we need to address. We know they're submitted, but they don't send them to us directly. Yes, it's a records management issue we need to address. That's how it's always been done. We don't have all that information readily available and it takes time to get it from the county, so.
So it's not just a matter of counting houses is what you're saying?
No, you have to look at every. No, you have to look at every. Building permit that was pulled. So we could tell you the difference in dwelling unit year over year. So that's one way to look at it, but then there's also all of the building permits that may be an additional. Garage or that are also included in that growth number. So we can definitely tell you by next meeting. The difference in dwelling in the count year over year and we can take a stab and talk to.
My, my concern as to the future of looking at assessments because. We were talking to major construction just earlier in the meeting. We have Grandview Manor and we maybe, and we probably will have other requests in the future or more, uh. Multi residential. Properties. Growth is important and growth is important to the assessment thus to the taxation.
Absolutely. John, I just want to go back to Council Walsh's comments and I think they're very fair. I think that we recognized after last year. There was lessons to be learned from, from our public meeting. Um, but I'm not sure we've had time to do yet because it's timing is now due is to understand what those lessons are. And then how do we move forward on perhaps changing the way we do that meeting or the timing of that meeting? What kind of information we're looking for? And I think that's, that's something that we really need to sit down and do and. I think if we do that, then that'll help us figure out. Whether or not the timing is the issue or the process or how we present or, or where we are and, and have that conversation. So I think. I mentioned that kind of Jennifer today that. You know, some thoughts on that, but we haven't really thought about it and done it yet. So we do need to do that.
And maybe location as well, because I know we, we've done it in the gym, we've done it in here. This room is too small, that room is almost too big. And so, uh, just the, the planning of the public presentation too. Um, not, not to get into the weeds of the operations of how we present, but. Maybe looking at just some different ways on, on how we, how we do that and how we present. Even if this is the best forum or whether, uh, maybe, maybe the Lions Club actually offers, um, maybe a, a better solution. Because there would be the three large screens right there too.
Yeah.
Our hall is small.
Yeah.
All right, let's proceed with this and we'll, we'll park that to come back to it for sure.
Okay, uh, so within version one, we've made assumptions here and I felt it was important to highlight those. Uh, so first we have no change in the tax rate. Uh, we have included the solar garden as a town asset. Um, so it does have a net zero impact on the operational budget. Um, right now the ownership is currently under review with the UARB. So until we kind of flush through the details of that, we'll leave it in here as department. Um, and again, just to remind you, it does currently have a zero impact, um, on the overall operational budget. The RCMP increase, we've utilized six point five percent. And that is based on the increase that was recognized within this fiscal year. Uh, we're making assumption that the grant applications that we've noted within version one are successful. Uh, we've utilized a increase in utilities of two point seven percent. Um, again, that's an estimate based on the increase that we experienced last year with the flow through. Currently CPI is entered at two point four percent. Uh, once the December information becomes available, then that will finalize our CPA. Because we do use a December to December timeframe for that. Group benefits, uh, we've estimated the increase at seven percent. Uh, that is, uh, slightly less than what we've experienced within the current year. Um, but that was based on dialogue, um, that we've had with our benefits brokerage and what the market seems to be indicating we'll see. Uh, so the collective agreement with QP, which is our outside workers within public work is up for negotiations. So at present, we've held the wages at the twenty four, twenty five rate. And we have applied the CPI of the two point four percent to those wages. Um, but negotiations start in February and as those, or March. As those figures become finalized, then we will be updating, uh, the salary based on the final negotiation, uh, new agreement. Our assessment services, uh, which is the PBSC. We've done an estimate increase of seven percent and that is based on the increase in our uniform assessment. We've assumed the same increase to education of seven point, seven percent. Um, again, the uniform assessment plus the enrollment numbers is what is used to determine our education contribution from the town. Uh, the area dividend slash deficit, we currently have in as zero. Uh, the area hasn't presented their budget yet, so we don't have any indication of if there will be a dividend or a deficit. So as that information becomes known, we will update our budget as a twenty seven percent owner to reflect that. Our insurance increase, uh, we use the same increase that we. Recognized in this fiscal year. Um, so it did fluctuate between. Property assessments, we saw a high, a higher increase of around fourteen percent. Uh, whereas our vehicle in, increase was approximately five. Um, and then liability was about four. So again, as we recognize, um, actual numbers, we'll be able to update those figures accordingly as well. Um, we have no additional staff. Um, we do have the one change which, um. Director Don Dale will speak to when he goes through the department, but our public works manager is retiring. So there is just one month worth of salary in for that, two months, I'm sorry, April and May. Um, for that individual, but, um. That's all the changes, I guess, to staff that are in version one. And then there is no capital funded out of operating included. And as I mentioned in the information report, there's no transfers to reserves that are currently included in version one as well.
Questions? And we have our first one from Deputy Mayor.
Paperwork has been submitted for the retirement. I'm just saying, could they change their line?
Uh, official paperwork, no.
Okay.
Multiple verbal. Um, but yes, that's a good point.
Any other questions on those? Any timelines on when we will know for sure on any of these things like the RCMP increase? That's not a confirmed percentage, is it?
No, it's not.
So I, I'm, 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 I hear about that one, yeah.
Last year we received it in April because it was after we had approved our budget.
I don't think that's quite, quite true. Um, they, someone from the RCMP Department of Justice did contact, they reached out to the CAOs. Verbally to confirm what they expect to be increased to be, but it needed to be ratified by, um, Treasury and Review. So we have not received that call this year and we did receive that call and quit, changed it in the budget before.
Okay. Cause our.
But it was a.
Budget was different than what was actually.
Yeah, I thought we made the change. Though, so we might.
So the sound call may get maybe different though than what they find when we do it.
It could be, so they don't send it or make it public. They just give you a heads up. Um, on what you might want to use for budgeting purposes, but we have not received that communication this year.
And assessment services, so some of these provincial numbers, we don't, they haven't dealt with our budget. So we don't know that or will we get any indication early on?
The assessment services, I'm pretty confident that.
Well, that's.
It's tied to our uniform assessment growth.
Okay, that's good. I, yeah.
And education, we should receive, it should be within the next, I don't know, I'd say a couple of weeks, um. I'm trying to think of when, I don't know why I'm looking at you, but the, um. Kindergarten registration and stuff usually is used to drive it, um.
Yeah, it's open right now. It's.
Yeah.
It'll be open for a while, I think, yeah.
So it's usually, um. I think mid-February is when we typically get enrollment, enrollment numbers.
May I just make a point? So our education formula is different than everyone else in the province. Um, so the education rate is set by the province. So I think it's forty three cents on your uniform assessment. Forty six cents. It's a percentage on your uniform assessment. So everyone in Nova Scotia pays a, based on the. Thirty percent of what the province or your uniform assessment, I'm sorry, based on your uniform assessment. There's a rate of, I think it's forty three, forty six cents on your municipality's uniform assessment. And that money, part of money goes to the province to cover thirty percent of education costs for the entire province. In Kings County, we also on top of that, um. Education percentage, we also then further take enrollment, so actual number of. Berwick residents that are enrolled in, is it Berwick School?
Yes.
In Berwick School, it's then further, um, part of the calculation. So. We can put seven percent in because we know that's our increase for uniform assessment. But it could vary slightly based on enrollment.
Kings County is the only one that has that, if you.
That I'm aware of, yes. That's why we were sued in twenty oh eight. Because we had a different formula and the county was receiving. Was the, so Berwick was even, but the county was saying they were paying a dip million dollars more. And kind of former Burt were paying a million dollars less because of enrollment. But it fluctuates every, based on where the enrollment is. But Kings County is the only area that I'm aware of in Nova Scotia that has the money.
Just a fun fact.
Yeah. Okay, so you, I guess that for information, there's some time lag when we know and when some of those things could change and then some of those will. Could be far up to us. Okay, Karen.
Okay. It'd be, it'd be beneficial to highlight, um, essentially our mandatory costs. Um, and the change in cost and the sense on the tax rate. Um, so within asterisks. The, coupled with the asterisk, um, so fire services, RCMP and transit. Um, we do have, or council does have, uh, the ability to change the service levels there. Um, and they are stirred essentially because it wouldn't be something that you would be able to change for this fiscal year's budget. Um, because they are lengthy processes to make. Um. The changes there, but something if council wishes to, then can start the process.
And, and some of the processes are more complicated. For example, RCMP. You have to come up with what your alternative police solution would be. So there would be additional costs that you have to put into that review. Um, transit, if we decided we wanted to do something different. Um, usually the UARB has to get involved to determine whether routes can be changed or. Removed from a already established route. So again, these are things that we can't just make changes this fiscal year and have an impact on. But they are things that are put in our budget that we don't have a lot of control over. Particularly with something like transit where we are part of a larger. Inter municipal service arrangement. Um, and we don't have any veto power on a budget that gets approved. So we have a say and we get to go to those meetings and provide our insight or feedback on budget items. But we don't have, um. Swaying power to approve or not approve the budget in any given year. So we have some power at the negotiating approval at the board, but our council percentage to approve the budget is very small.
No questions about that?
Just a couple other, um, points there. So you'll see that these costs essentially represent thirty six and a half percent of the expenses within the operating budget. Uh, so it is a substantial portion. And these costs that are listed here collectively have increased just over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, in this budget versus last. So if you think about the assessment of two hundred thousand, um, for growth based on this tax rate. Um, a hundred thousand value is eaten up by the change and increase in these service costs. That was important to.
Just look. I just looked at the last one, waste management. That's up about twenty two percent if I recall.
It is.
My review, uh, that's fairly significant. And is that just because they've come up with a budget early or is it because they have another level of administration? That has, has been developed or, or is it just increasing cost of moving, moving the waste around the province?
Good question. Um, the increase for this year is due to new waste contracts. So we were under a different contract, um, for waste collection up until next year. So we were protected by cost of living increases or what was outlined in the collection contract. The collection contract has been renewed and so this is year one of that new collection contract with new trucks, um, new service. What you will see when we present the waste management budget is in years two and three. We will start to see a decrease in that cost because of EPR, it's under producer responsibility. But we're going to see an increase next year because of these new contracts that came due, um, for collection services.
That was my next question. The, uh, EPR, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, that, that has been enacted, has it not? Or, and or is it?
December.
It's not going to be.
For this coming December.
So that's not enacted yet?
Correct.
Okay, so they are.
For changes that need to be made for the collection stream, it's not until December twenty twenty five.
So effectively we're still paying double.
So your last point about the, uh, the hundred thousand dollar increase. Can, I know you, you made a comment on it, can you make sure that gets in any presentations if we're going to use this? I think that's a really valuable piece.
Yeah.
For, for our public. I don't know if you've got it, other than you just mentioned it on another one of those fun facts.
Fun fact, yeah, that we'll definitely update, um, yeah. Alright, um, so this slide essentially shows the revenue by source on the left. Um, so as you see here, we do rely heavily on our taxes and. The acronym for the GILT is our Grants in lieu of Taxes. And so those are for Alliance and, um, Canada Post. So certainly the biggest reliance we have here is on, um, our taxation. Um, and then in the table on the right, uh, we've organized the changes to the revenue. Um, just, I should have starred the sale of services, uh, with that substantial increase. And that is the revenue from the solar garden, uh, which you'll see nets out on the expense one. And as we go through the department slides, then we kind of drill down more into what's driving these changes as well. As we get more detail up there. Next slide, please. Uh, so essentially the same here is the, on the left, uh, the expenses by, by department. And so we see, you know, general government at thirty one percent, protective services nineteen. Public Works at eighteen, um, solar represents eight percent of the expenses within the budget and. we've got planning development, community development as well. And so again, the table on the right does identify the overall department changes. Don't both dollar and percentage change. And again, as we get into the next slides, then we'll get into the detail which is driving those expense changes.
Just quick, so again, the expense by services, that includes the amount that we pay RCMP?
Yes, so protective services is your RCMP, your fire services and your bylaw.
Okay. Where does the education fall in under that?
Under general.
Under general government, okay. Is there a way, and maybe I'm opening up a can here, but is there a way to like show that in that thirty-one percent?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, like, I mean, I, I know that sometimes we catch black like milk because we often do break out those numbers. But I mean, it would be, I think it would be worthwhile to show too that of that thirty-one percent, this is a mandatory cost that goes towards education, right?
Absolutely.
You know, because I know that's, when we go to those public meetings again, it, it's always, it's not so much like, you know, like, oh, transit costs you that this, but it's the, it's the stuff that they think that the town can cut back on, right? So if we can display that, that is, that's an area that we are spending on and thirty-one percent is the biggest chunk there. So that'll help break that down. Yeah. And if there's any others that I missed maybe from that previous slide too, that maybe could be broken out more on that. Not, not that we don't want to, we don't want to overfill the pie, but I, I think that would be very helpful. Yeah, yeah. Nine times through and I caught a few tricks.
Okay, so I think we'll call a bit of a break here and for a stretch, maybe a short walk to do one of the watchman facilities and then be back in five, ten minutes and carry on.
I won't be breaking those comments, it's critical.
No, I like that. No, I know. Yeah, thank you. We have lots of birthdays too.
I love it. So just for fun. Our, the education is going to be presented Saturday.
Saturday, that's going to make a huge surprise. That is awesome.
And then our PSC is also.
Yeah, order and we're being recorded. And so Lisa.
I'm actually going to turn it over to Chuck. Oh. So we're going to share the spotlight tonight with all of the department heads and go through the different department summaries. What I would like to suggest, so page sixty of your agenda package is, represents the expenses related to this slide. So page sixteen, sixty-one. So as we go through, we'll go in order of how, I hope they're in order of how they appear in your package. So we'll pause after each slide and if you have any specific questions, we've tried to just pick out changes in the budget year over year that are significant. But there might be other changes in the budget that are, I think in the red, that you might pick up on and have questions about. So again, leave that pause after each slide. So this slide is Legislative Services, so it's all the expenses related to council grants to organizations and in previous year, the election. So council honorariums does see a increase and this is related to the remuneration review that council concluded last term and the update to the policy. So a lump sum amount was added to all remuneration for mayor, deputy mayor and council honorary in addition to the two point four percent. So that's where that lump sum difference comes from. And then for council expenses, what I realized when I was approving expense claims is that the cost of the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities Conference has significantly increased from the last time we adjusted our budget. So, but though we had some councillors that didn't attend in previous years, there wasn't a huge variance. So we put in one conference at the rate of the Nova Scotia Federation of Municipality Fall Conference. But council could decide that if a council member can attend that, that there might be another training piece. So within that budget. Or council may want to change policy on, on the increasing cost. So that's what that is related to. So increase in the cost and also the increase of room nights, as we know. Those are just things that had not been adjusted in previous years to represent actuals. We are seeing though a decrease to the election. Caveat though, this was paid for out of operating reserves last year. So we paid for a number of expenses out of our operating reserves. So they did not impact our tax our bottom line with taxes. So they were using money that was set aside to fund these. So although it shows a reduction of fifteen thousand dollars, it doesn't come off fifteen thousand dollars off the tax rate that we can then allocate somewhere else because it was funded from an external well, internal but external to our tax revenue. And then grants to org, we removed the five thousand dollars that was included last year as a in case special request for housing. We did not receive any requests from the community or any other requests for funding outside of the Zamboni request that was received. And so we removed that for version one, if council wishes to put that back in. And in the RFD in front of you, there is a list of all of the organizations that we do provide grants to if you're looking for that bottom line. So I'll pause there. Oh, sorry, information requirement request for decision has the list of all the grants. So although those were some up and downs, the net change year over year is forty-two hundred dollars to Legislative Services. So if there's any other questions related to that section of the budget, I'd be happy to answer them or send it to Lisa and answer.
Any questions on that section?
Just had a question on grants to organizations. And I guess when I was going through them, are those annual commitments or commitments that we have made into the future? And these are, every year we're going to do this no matter what.
It's a combination of that and we put them in. So other than landmark east, which we said was two years a year for five years, the other ones, and I guess Kings County's Senior Safety. The other ones are ones that since I've been here, we do every year and we just bring them to council's attention and if you want to change them, we look for direction, but we don't receive requests for them every year. We just carry them over. And we highlight them every year for feedback, but to date, we haven't changed any of those.
Just the community association is part of an agreement that we have with them for an amount that we, we, we're actually in the process of reviewing that agreement and some changes. So that could be a place where we change that agreement. But yeah, the rest of those I think are kind of like that.
Oh, sorry, the Mural Society.
Every year. And I, we had a request from them, I think.
Not yet.
And I heard from them and they were going to follow me and you'll make requests. So that will be forthcoming. Good. No further questions on this?
Next page or section is administrative services. So this would include admin and finance department expenses. So we're seeing a decrease in admin fees. So this is related to a request by the utility and review board when we went through our annual rate application with Berwick Electric. That cost that we included in our admin fees that were office supplies, postage, any of those expenses that we would put under the town of Berwick and then expense under the admin feedback to Berwick Electric that in the future, just expense them directly to Berwick Electric. So that six thousand is a reduction of those costs that we've moved into the Berwick Electric budget. Twenty thousand for miscellaneous revenue. So when area was created, there once was a fee that area paid to the municipal units to cover time that the CAO spent assisting area. And in last year's budget, the board approved to remove that twenty thousand dollars that was established in twenty fourteen or so, to be removed from the budget. So we no longer receive any money from, directly related to my time spent on area business.
Area hasn't done their budget yet and it might be something that we could suggest that we consider. Our, our CAO's spent a tremendous amount of time at area and it's to me, it was probably the the worst time we should have been reducing that because now they're doing far more work than we're doing before. And we're getting nothing for their time at that. So I will be bringing it up at area budget meetings, so.
So what you're telling us is that although they're no longer paying for that support, that support is still being created. I made the assumption when I looked at it, yeah, they had hired someone and you didn't have to do this.
And I suggest spending more time. You can, you can tell us that.
Since you meet to area, are other IMSA organizations that I would attend meetings like Valley Waste and Kings Transit, those organizations do not pay back to the other municipalities for CAO time. But I think that was the expectation when they were created. You were hiring the expertise, which area did, but I think recognized in the early days that they didn't have the capacity to hire lots of staff to cover off the other duties. So the CAOs really played a larger role in the operations of area, whereas Kings Transit and Valley Waste, yes, we attend meetings and provide feedback to the GM. But it's not at the same level as area. And I would say that I think they were trying to get there. But in my two years since, or three years since coming here, I would not agree that I spend just I spend as, I spend more time with area than I do any other IMSA organization and in the last year particularly.
I suggest it's much, much more operational than supportive than might be in the other.
Absolutely. Making like, area had a, or has, the CAOs and the treasurer of area, which who is the director of finance for Annie Ganish, are what they call a expense authorization group. So we were making decisions based on like, or policy that we could make operational decisions for that IMSA, which I don't have that power with other IMSA organizations. Because it is more from that general governance point of view than it is from operations. So something we can definitely discuss at area as we go through a transition and see the role that they were looking to play moving forward.
Just a question, question on that, right? And you may be coming up to it later. But a number of these org, number of these IMSAs, some of them have reserves. Some of them do not. Are we at risk and should we be looking at those reserve amounts within the towns? And how would that impact whether our operating or our overall capital reserves?
Question. I don't have that later on in the presentation. So for area, the reserve that was set up was a legislative requirement. Whereas Valley Waste and Kings Transit do have reserves that they use. And some, so for Kings Transit, the town actually pays a lump sum on top of their operating to contribute to, so we pay four thousand dollars annually to Kings Transit and they put it away to a reserve. Part of this I enter, or interim IMSA was supposed to look at some of these policies. I believe that some draft policy work had been done, but it has not been presented to the CAO group. It has not been presented to the board. But that is always an area where some municipalities feel that they should put the money aside themselves. Because as an owner, if they needed to pay in for something, they would, but they would like the flexibility to use that reserve funding for their projects and find the money for those other IMSA organizations when the time came and manage the interest on it and everything. And some municipalities feel that we should be paying in and building reserves. So getting an expert opinion on that, we don't have at this time. But it is, it is an area that has been flagged. I just don't have an answer for you. And I can bring it up at the next CAO meeting with the IMSA group for Kings Transit and Valley Waste and see if it was something that was supposed to be delivered on. And then salary allocations have decreased based on actual expenses from previous year for Berwick Electric. So over the past year, through our paywork system, staff has identified the amount of time that they spend working on Berwick Electric projects and tasks or billing or dealing with the public. And we're spending more time than what we have previously allocated to Berwick Elect, or recovered from Berwick. Recovered from Berwick Electric, so that we're seeing a decrease in the salaries because it's now being charged to Berwick Electric. Clear as mud. Any questions on administration? So the next one is Town Hall, sort of, I was trying to do one of like. So this is for the operation of this building. In the revenue, we would receive lease payments from the Annapolis Valley Regional School Board offices. The town of Berwick covers the cost for the regional library for Berwick, but we do receive money from the headquarters rental. So we are seeing a decrease in costs for this coming year for Town Hall because we have a new cleaning contract. And we're, we're seeing savings for this. Any questions on it?
I noticed there's a slight increase in the lease payment from the library board. When's that contract and when, let's say, how does he increase or what, we have a reserve? If, if expenses to operate the Town Hall are increasing, are they reflected in our lease arrangement?
Can just, I'll look at the duration, but it is capped at a one point five percent increase year over year.
And we knew that when? I guess I have another question around that is in Kings County funding, does that, how does that adjust based on or?
So I actually have more information on that unless you have data on that.
I have, I have the funding agreement which shows that it doesn't increase.
Right.
That's the one, the funding.
From your municipality of Kings, it's the same year over year for fourteen years.
Because it was based on capital, not operating. So Kings County has special agreements with Berwick. When we rebuilt this building and needed to have a new location for the library, that agreement is related to the capital cost of the new Berwick Library. And in Kentville, they would have a similar agreement with Kentville where they built their new library or renovated for their new library is not related to operating costs of the library.
So when it ends in fourteen years, which must be getting?
It was just signed in two thousand eighteen.
So around for fourteen more years for the capital build that happened in?
It's November nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen is when the agreement was signed for the duration of fourteen years.
And the building was built when?
Okay, thirty-two. I'm getting the look that like.
Well, I, I can't answer that question because I wish we were like, I, I would have said two thousand fifteen.
Yeah. So we're ten. Is that when we signed for fourteen?
And no increases over that period. I don't have the history and had to come up with a number, but that's what the math's really.
Oh, sorry.
Term for the lease with the library is up to and including February twenty eighth, twenty thirty-seven.
And the annual increase is one point five?
It's capped at one point five percent.
And when did we sign that one?
On the twenty first of April, two thousand sixteen. Twenty thirty-seven.
Okay. I think I checked council, who's next? Sorry.
The only guy I had was looking at repairs and maintenance. That will not include the front end teams in there that we've already improved.
Correct. That's funded from capital.
Okay.
My question relates to facility insurance. Under the lease, does the library have their own insurance or reinsurance? Related to insurance is who provides the insurance and how often do we go back to tender for insurance?
So we provide that insurance for the building. For the entire building, not just for next door. Yes, yeah. And it was on my list to vote to tender because it hasn't been done for a number of years. But unfortunately, it's still in draft form and we won't be able to get it before we're up for renewal. They'll have to prioritize it for next fiscal year. But yeah.
The library likely has their own commercial tenant policy though.
Yes.
Yeah.
Tenant policy, not a physical property.
Yeah.
All right, any further questions on Town Hall? Next.
For other government. So these are all other services that Town Hall under the previous, or slides. But this is where the taxation is collected under this account or department. So as Lisa has identified, we are seeing an increase of two hundred thousand dollars over the previous year based on change in assessment. Just to note that last year, we had a change year over year of about three hundred and forty-two. This year it's two hundred and likely due to the low cap of one point five percent. However, we also need to address how much of that is new construction as well. We're seeing a decrease of two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars from, that we used as a transfer from operating reserves or the state safe research fund. So as I mentioned, election was funded or the operating reserves last year. So this version of the budget includes no transfers from our operating reserves or safe restart to offset any costs. And we'll provide some updates on those reserve funds at the next. Audit fees, so we're seeing another increase of twenty thousand dollars over last year. Misses reflected based on actual historical billings and also market rates. So we have received bids for our audit service for next year. And the adjustment, I think we're at forty-five thousand in total, is reflective of the bids that we have received. So that is market rates and consistent with what we've heard from other municipalities as well that have recently on it for tender.
So we were getting a good deal before, is what yours mean?
We were at the baseline, but we were getting billed significantly more for extra work.
Okay.
So we weren't necessarily saving money. The bottom line was good on what we signed the contract for, but we were always receiving additional bills to cover general entries and adjustments that you've made.
Am I able to ask if our current person submitted a tender?
No, they did not.
Okay.
And that was advised in advance that due to personal change.
No, no, that's, that's why I just got to see the face of the person.
So we're seeing an increase in mandatory contributions budgeted at seven percent right now for education and P V S C. So that's having an impact of an additional forty-seven thousand for version one. And last year, we budgeted a deficit for area based on information we received during a regular area meeting. And this year, we have no indication that there is a deficit, so that has been removed. So there is a net impact from area this year. There was a dividend last year, but we have not heard whether or not that will be declared. That's something that the board needs to consider and to date, it's been declared but not distributed.
It was a decision of area to recognize we need to make, the area needs to make the dividends annually, but didn't have the money to do it. So they declared that it would, so we have it as receivable for some day or time in the future.
Stan is a receivable until it's received.
Collected.
Or written off.
Yeah. So we might have an update on that at the next meeting. Any questions, other questions on? That was page sixty-four. Okay, police services, so that's the next slide, R C and P. So we have budgeted, budgeted an increase of six point five percent based on last year's increase, which results in fifty-three thousand dollar increase over last year. And that's a estimate. Any questions on that one?
None of this is tied, tied to cost of living at all or their service degree?
There, no, it's not. So there would be a part of it that is, but the, there's also common costs that they submit to treasury that is included in the per officer rate. So when the per officer rate increases any times by four for Berwick, it's not just whatever's in the collective agreement for increased to salaries. It's also related to any requests that they put in for equipment that is then expensed under that common cost.
We have any other question on that is revenues of five hundred dollars, which really comes from speeding tickets or tickets within town boundaries. Is there any way to bear up by that? But that is happening, not happening, or it's not worth the time and effort?
We, we have asked that question at the police service advisory board meetings. And the sergeant has said that they will make sure to communicate to their members that when they write tickets that they select municipal, but that's all it's based on. It's they need to be writing the tickets in Berwick and selecting municipal for us to receive any fines associated with it. So one of the things that we could ask for the next meeting is how many fines have been of these stats they present us? Can they tell us how many tickets were written?
And is there any way to determine whether that is municipal county or municipal town of Berwick?
This is a question, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but something we could find out at the next week. Year to date, we have three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-four cents.
Fantastic. How much they, that's wasn't fine.
Two, three hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-four cents.
My last ticket was more than that and that was just outside of town. Next time, I'll make sure I'm in town. I was on the side of the very main driveway.
I'm gonna hold her up here. Stunting in fifty kilometers now, isn't it?
So they do give you, they give you an accounting, they say this is how it breaks down and?
I don't know what it looks like, I'm just looking at the account and can see we have one for ninety-eight dollars and one for the others, so.
Okay, so it does come on a kind of ongoing basis as the, so it's not just this, but it's not just this end where they send you a check for five hundred bucks, so this is what we got?
No. And I believe a portion of it goes to the courts to cover the cost of process.
But his absence makes it hard.
Yes.
Yes, it's something that.
So just looking at pie charts again. So if we had to separate the amount that we spend on protective services away from what we spend on R C and P, what would the difference of dollars be or percentage?
Like you'd like to know?
Yeah, like what, what, what do we pay above and beyond like the R C and P? Or no, that didn't sound right.
So if you do protective services, how much is fire, how much is police?
Yeah.
Or N Remo?
Yeah. Yeah, if they were, if they were like sort of subsectioned off of that.
So bylaw, so there's no change. And this percentage, so this budget does not include any bylaw officer. This was something that came up that members of council heard on, during their campaign. We have not included any position in the budgets, we'll be looking for direction on that. And at the very end, we have a rough estimate on what that would cost. So what this is related to for expenses is, as I said, off the side of our desk. So this is a like ten percent, it's a very small percentage of Christmas, sorry, our executive assistant salary that is posted here to account for sending letters and keeping track of bylaw complaints. Fun fact.
I love this, it's like public video, the council edition.
R C and P makes up seventy percent of their protective services budget.
Yeah, yeah.
I had to change the name.
Positive, like be positive.
So this version of the budget doesn't yet have the contribution from the municipality of the county of Kings for operating related expenses. And because we don't have the call volume yet, but I will just ask Lisa to give a brief overview of what we do receive is covered by the county of Kings.
Sure, so essentially it is their operational expenses. The only thing that is not included in the portion that the municipality Kings covers is the debt repayment. And that is because it is related to capital. So essentially that is the town's portion of what we contribute to capital in conjunction with the fire commission and the Berwick District Volunteer Fire Department. And so the revenue that we do receive is based on a three-year rolling average of the percentage of calls that our fire department responds to within Kings County. And then that percentage of calls is then applied to the operational budget with the exception of the debt repayment. So there is a cap, so the manual, manual maximum annual increase that can be applied, which the municipality Kings will fund, is an increase of C P I using December to December plus two percent. But I would say that the chief is very lean with his budget. You'll see that there's even a decrease, there's really no access in there and he is fantastic and very, yeah, with this budget.
Evidence, would we look for maybe an increase just being at certain meetings that they might be looking for? Gym equipment or maybe memberships to our gym?
So just pause that while I'll tell you that eighteen thousand dollars of debt repayment. Although it's decreased for this budget, it's only because the water storage tank has not been completed. Once that water storage tank is completed, at least eighteen thousand dollars will be included in this budget next year. And that is only based on phase one of the project that was approved by council and not phase two, which was added after. So we will see at least eighteen thousand dollars, which is just shy of, well, I should say just shy half three quarters of a cent on the tax rate will be added automatically next year based on debt repayment. Now, if you'd like to ask that question, just to say that there is, they do keep that lean, this is the operations of the fire hall. They also have their own bank account where they get all of their fundraising from the fifty-fifty that they use for some of their other expenditures that are outside of what would be funded by the county of Kings. And they do also sometimes contribute when it's not required to capital purchases using that funding as well.
Yes.
Any other questions on other services?
We can just add, I know you mentioned the fitness center and just if people weren't aware, all active firefighters do receive the same benefit that town staff and council do. So an annual membership is approximately two hundred and fifty dollars a year for firefighters. So just in case no, there isn't folks who are aware, but we did follow up on that earlier this year and share that with the members there.
Do we do a stipend to our firefighters, do we?
So that's included in the budget.
Okay.
I'm not sure what it is, but it's around twelve thousand.
Five thousand dollars.
Okay.
The ordinary?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, and do they have, are they included on the health spending, like the two hundred dollars health spending, no?
No, wellness, no.
Yeah, okay. I guess continuing the This is where you wow us, right?
So for Public Works, we have a forty-six thousand dollar decrease in budget for next fiscal year relative to this fiscal year's forecasting budget. A big part of that decrease is the retirement of the former director of Public Works, who's anticipated to retire in May, which means we only have one month of compensation in this budget for that individual. who's anticipated to retire in May, which means we only have one month of compensation in this budget for that individual. As well, a portion of the current director budget is allocated to the solar garden. There's a fourteen thousand dollar increase in shop in, in Public Works building, maintenance and repairs. A large portion of that is because of a cleaning, the change in the cleaning contract, which we've seen a decrease in some facilities, but an increase in others. As well, planned maintenance on our heating and ventilation systems within the shop itself. We still have propane heating systems and they're getting quite up there in age and requiring more maintenance than they have in the past. We also have added costs with respect to security, emergency lighting, waste, yard maintenance, and some drainage within the shop, which was, it's being carryover from this fiscal year's budget. We also have a thirty eight thousand dollar increase for road supplies and equipment. This is a. This is, sorry. If I get it just right, I can talk. And I'm scrolling down to the budget, this, this increase is looking at things like salt, transportation of salt, sand for winter operations. We've also added eight thousand dollars to reflect the actual cost of spring and fall cleanup, which hasn't actually been in the budget before, we just covered that as we could. We've added two thousand dollars to replace a garbage can within the town streets every year, really from a simple asset management standpoint. We have approximately twenty garbage cans and they lasted about three or four years. So if we replace one a year, two a year, we can stay on top of them and prevent deferred cost. Finally, we have a reduction of approximately five K relating to Kings point to point. And really, all this is doing is taking the shared cost down to what it historically has been after an increase, a one-year increase which was in place last year. Any questions?
My only question is, we're staying to basically the same sand gravel relationship we have in other years of spreading out over.
So far.
Erin, there was a mention of a forty four thousand dollar increase in the operational needs. I'm not seeing that. Where did I see that? I think it was in. Maybe in the info report, just kind of looking for clarity on the operational needs. That. I was thinking some of it may be related to salary and of, you know, the.
That's in general, the building, the building maintenance, so that that's including the thirty eight thousand and the fourteen thousand dollars, just lumping that together, calling the operational needs.
Okay.
And Kings point to point? That's right, why is, why is that there?
That's where it's always been in the budget, is where it's. Where it's reported to for the financial information returns, so the province requires it to be within transportation.
And I guess Kings transit would be here to, to, uh, increase on what that would look like. So we haven't received any direction from Kings point to point, council approved a one-time increase, but we haven't received as of this version whether or not another increase will be requested, so for the budget, we were removed it to. Counselor God.
Point to point, there's a meeting tomorrow evening, and that is on the table.
Okay.
So it will be during the fourth or probably by the next committee.
And we kind of did hear that, we might hear it, but we wanted to just make council aware of the change before we receive the.
Yeah. Is it in that same, do you know the numbers yet?
No, no. It won't be you.
Okay, counsel.
So just hearing that Kings transit should also be under your valley waste, would that also be under there too?
Next one.
Really?
Yeah, so environmental, yeah.
Huh, but the, but the brush cleanup, or, okay, that's related to road supplies and equipment, okay.
And that's our personal story, Erin, I'm stealing your thunder, but you know your throat is sore.
I'll interject if I have to.
Seventy eight thousand is related to what the town spends on the brush and leaf, not what Valley Waste does.
Right, okay.
They are separate budgets.
Okay, and another breakaway in the pie chart too?
Yes.
Awesome, awesome, let's keep this flow going.
Yes, to separate out Kings point, point and Kings transit and that they're not part of that.
Circle and then outside circle.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was gonna say, my, my only point is with the bin being there, we probably save money, like I know we relate eight thousand, but I've seen tons of people, myself, who that will go up with their own vehicle and drop stuff off that trips that we don't have to repeat it.
Well, mention too, within that thirty eight thousand dollars is an adjustment to our salt budget. The amount we've been carrying for the past year or two or three doesn't really reflect today's pricing for salt. We pay about sixty nine dollars a ton for salt, and then we pay another fifty dollars a ton to have it transported to Berwick. And look just right quick here. I, I don't have the number, but we used about three hundred and fifty tons of salt last winter. So taking last year's numbers and this year's pricing to come up with next year's forecast is really all we're doing.
Erin, can I ask, how did you come up with four thousand dollars for additional paving from last year? Is there any magic formula that you've, you've got there?
I added. Added two percent.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
A little something is better than nothing.
Well, yeah, I was surprised, see, we could use it, we could make it three and a half, if you'd like, three and a half percent, let's do two percent.
I'm just, we missed, not that we missed the ball, but we come in on something and we're off like ten percent, we've seen it with vehicles and stuff. Like I said, I'd rather people go a little higher than we're always like, whoa, how did we miss it so bad?
Really? That is a bit of a discretionary item that we've done in the past, and you said you got this much to spend on paving, you go for it, so that, that number is easily adjusted up or down if you want to, and that's how we've done it in the past, so.
Okay.
So we done with Erin?
Nope.
Okay.
And this ties this way, I, I pulled out Valley Waste here. But not in a cute pie chart, just.
This, this one is different than it was this afternoon, so just give me thirty seconds here, ten, five seconds. So we have, so our revenue matches our expenses. This, our budget shows a seventy seven thousand dollar increase over last year's forecasting budget. A portion of that cost is on the wastewater collection side, which includes our manholes, the pipes under the roads and our pumping stations. That's, that's, I've increased that by almost eighteen thousand dollars a year. That eighteen thousand dollars is to cover additional CCTV camera work, where we do visual inspection of the pipe. It's to cover additional flushing of the pipes. Aging infrastructure requires more maintenance to keep it going. We've also added additional maintenance on the pumping stations. Culturally, if the pumping station's not broke, we don't really look at it. That works, that works very well for several years, but eventually it catches up with you, and we do need to start doing some preventative maintenance on our pumping stations. Within that also is we have a data acquisition system called Skata. Skata is a, is a software, again, that can acquire data, it sends us automatic alarms if we have an issue. So instead of having our employees drive around town seven days a week to check for flashing lights at any point, twenty four seven, if there's an issue with the pump station, our own coworkers will get a call. So it, it, it allows us to be a bit more passive. There should be a corresponding decrease in compensation, and we should be able to respond a bit more intelligently when we do have an actual issue at a pump station. Skata is a technology that's existed elsewhere for over thirty years, so it's not, it's not anything, it would just be us catching up. From a lab testing standpoint, this additional ten thousand dollars is really just looking at today's price and what we're paying today for lab testing. This is an increase that probably has happened over time, and so we're just right sizing the budget to account for today's price. We do have an opportunity to tender for lab testing, and if we tender, there's a potential likelihood that we can decrease this spend. That's an opportunity that we're looking at here before the start of the fiscal. So on the collection side, we had a seventeen, eighteen thousand dollar increase. On the treatment side, we have a twenty three thousand dollar increase. Ten thousand dollars of that is to perform an annual sledge survey. Within our ponds, we are accumulating sludge. That sludge, if we allow it to accumulate to a certain critical point, will start producing odor, which is a different odor than the odor we've had historically within the state, or within the town. So ten thousand dollars a year allows us to monitor how that sludge is growing or evolving so that we can plan to remove it effectively, efficiently, without having additional odor or a decreased level of service to our residents. We also have an increase in the amount of bacteria that we're adding, we've been adding a bacteria culture to the lagoons for the past couple of years. And we're doing this to help assist with eating the biological material within those lagoons. We're using more product than we've expected to use, we're using more this year than we did last year.
Is it a different product?
It's the same product. And the usage we have corresponds with Eden Valley's wastewater treatment. So this number, we're, we're adding based on what we know now of historical usage. But as Eden Valley upgrades their system, we may have an opportunity to reduce the amount of bugs, which will reduce our spend. That's something we'll be watching on a monthly basis to see what we can do there. Okay, in addition to this seventy seven thousand dollar increase, forty six thousand dollars of it is actually for Valley Waste. So it's not really spend that we're putting into our wastewater system, it's not something that we're gonna see an improvement or or an impact on our level of service for wastewater, but it is for Valley Waste, that's a shared service. So still quite.
But this would still be, so the increase to the sewer rate we've been talking about for the last year, right? This is, okay, and so, and forgive me, just for jumping to the number, so it's seventeen percent increase over previous or? Or sorry, no, fourteen, okay.
Fourteen percent.
Okay, and we have plans to continue to grow that over the next two, I'm guessing? Like, is that like sort of like step one, like as we look at like sewer, or just knowing that we are still, we've been historically so far behind, behind other municipalities, is this sort of like step one, and like in next year or the year after, we're looking at an increase again, is that?
Well, so rate now, we're reviewing, we're gonna redo the rates. So we've got the data with the businesses and their residences in town.
Yeah.
Which feed into our industry and the residential.
Yeah.
We've got more accurate flow data.
Yeah.
And from Eden Valley, so that drives our industrial portion.
Yeah.
So when we talk about nominal increases, I think if you remember last year, we were talking about the debt that we're going to incur with the wastewater treatment upgrades that will come into the budget for repayment, so what you bore off for the wastewater treatment plant will be recovered through your sewer. So, yes, I'm sure Erin's looking to continue to make those improvements. But I just want to make sure that council is also aware that while there may not be such a substantial increase to the sewer rates this year, there will be a more substantial one once that debt is placed and we start to make those repayments.
Yeah. Okay, and just another area that I think we should make sure that we, we highlight, if, if not like, if not also in the pie graph, but also when the assessments come out, like, just, just like our education rate, I think the sewer rate really needs to be highlighted that, you know, we're, it's an issue that we are working on, and this is where the investment is going into.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Particularly where the investment is usually made for paying for it, so, yeah, you can, it's usually in saying, now this is what you pay.
Yeah.
If I can just add to, these are really, these are changes to the repairs and maintenance components to these operational budgets. And really what's, this is right sizing, this is just getting us so that we can do the maintenance we should have been doing.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, never say never, but I don't anticipate any additional significant changes next year or the year after.
Yeah.
As some of these services increase in cost, we may have a corresponding increase.
Yeah.
In some cases, some of these will decrease, once we, once we catch up on some maintenance, we can pull back on these a little bit.
Yeah, and with better tracking of that, like, once you get that standard of where we need to be, then we have that better idea, though, we have other areas where we could say, we now know how much this costs, maybe there's opportunities to look for other funding too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's rate sizing, repairs and maintenance is really what's happening.
Yeah.
This, this year. Any other questions up?
I just have a question, and it probably isn't just related to Public Works, but our principal and our interest payments. I'm trying to follow through various departments that you have here, do we have a listing of when all of those debts retire? Or if so, can, should that be brought forward so that we see? But we owe so much now, and as we go forward, we hope for to reduce depending on, and I expect this might come in your capital.
Absolutely.
Budget, let's, I, I just saw it in, in one of the, it almost looks like most of the debt related to the sewer is almost gone, am I correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And. Until we do some work. But, but what I want to do, want to look at is, are we keeping a straight line of debt and debt repayment, is it going down over time? Is it going up?
Yeah, absolutely, so I did present that forecast last year when we did look at our five-year capital investment plan, and I did put it into the council's sharepoint for those as a reminder, new ones that you can have a peek at, so I will be revising that based on the capital budget asked. Because as you know, as they bring their reserve ones as well, and I really want to replenish those through planned replenishments. So you see your reserves coming down, you're gonna see your debt service going up. And I do utilize the financial condition indicator metric, so you can see when we go from yellow to red, and hopefully that gives council some indication of balancing both the short term and the long term. As we make those critical decisions. So we also have balloon payments that will be coming up, those will be included in that as well. Yeah, so all of that will come forward on the twenty eighth.
But it also impacts on the individual budgets too, and that's what concerns me is.
Yes.
It, it may not be just these costs are going up, but
Yeah.
we've got too much debt service.
We have a lot of debt proposed, and exactly, while your operating budget is just for twenty five, twenty six. We have a lot of debt proposed and exactly, while your operating budget is just for twenty-five, twenty-six. That's why it's important when you're approving the capital that you understand that the decisions that flow into your operating for quite a long period of time. Yeah, thank you.
Any others? Yeah, just have work on your new balloon.
Yes. Um so essentially.
Please pay.
Debt was placed, um so the town hall is a good example. And so it would have been placed, and this is just off the top of my head, say for ten years. Um rather than for the duration of the asset. And then you have the option with municipal finance to either make a lump sum payment or you refinance that debt. So we do, we just did one um fire hall for the fire hall and the dam. Um through BEC, and we do have town hall coming up within the next, not this fiscal year, but the following. So we did the same with the solar garden. So it's kind of a game time decision when you place the debt, if you know where your interest rates are or, you know, if you're trying to manage your debt extended over a long period of time. Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just have a question on, so with um our intention is to have the, we have a balance here with the with the sewer. Sewer rates and sewer expenses, so we're fifteen thousand dollars, but we're fifteen thousand budgeted last year, is there any tweaking that we can, that can be done or will be done to get us with any of those fees, revenue side, to get us at fifteen thousand dollars?
So I don't know if I understand the fifteen thousand.
We had a deficit last year, we don't have a deficit this year.
We have fifteen oh one.
Fifteen thousand one more.
So this was, how do we?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I thought it was a net zero. Yeah, you play with your rates, so you won't have a deficit. You'll be moving rates to essentially cover that off.
This year for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, what you didn't, sorry, what wasn't mentioned at the beginning of the slide is, maybe you're gonna say this. That Lisa just made revenue equal expenses for this draft, but the actual rates associated to the revenue have not been applied for version one.
No, no, we are, I think, okay. So what I did was put in balance, but I think my sheet might have got some adjustments to it, because your revenue is gonna bounce out. And I apologize, I missed the additional fifteen thousand. So yes, your sewer rates are always going to cover off the operational expenses that you need.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you, uh we ready to move on now?
Uh so planning and development, it just went back to me.
It's like, my turn.
I mean, no, I just want to determine that for long, and it's dead, so I apologize, I'm just gonna plug in that word here.
So under planning and development, we're seeing a increase in uh other professional services. So there is a small decrease. There is a small decrease um in other expenses, so the other professional services has increased by eighteen thousand five hundred. Though you'll notice the change year over year is less for the department, because there is a decrease in other expenses. Um but this is mostly related to um cost of living increases that have been adjusted to reflect what the county actually charges us for building and fire inspections. So in our agreement, it says that cost of living is applied to the agreement every year, but we weren't changing our budget to reflect that. So this is two years behind. Um so that has been changed, and then based on our planning activity, so the rates did um increase slightly for we signed a one-year extension with um brighter communities, planning services, brighter planning, anyways, um for one year. Because before we decide whether we're gonna go to tender again, um based on all the other things, we I need the true decision that one-year extension would give us enough time to think about what we wanted to do there. But what we're seeing is that staff communities is spending significantly more time for development agreement than what um the number of hours they allow for per cost of development agreement. So for example, when we get a development agreement, um I believe when we pay Crystal a lump fee for the development agreement, it relies on twenty-three hours of time. And that usually for a straightforward development agreement is enough hours. And I will find the exact hours, so don't quote me on twenty-three, but I'm using that as an example. When it goes over twenty-three hours, which we see Bentley DA that we just talked about earlier is three years in the making. The Kentville Estates that was down on two twenty-eight Main Street was three years of work. So anything over those twenty-three hours, we have to pay a per hour rate for the work that's done on that. So this is to reflect the increase in cost of living for our plant, for our building and fire inspection contract. And also the actual, to reflect actual expenses that we have been paying for planning. And this goes back to, if we have more as of right approval, we have less professional fees we have to pay for planning. It's something that we will look at as part of the next phase in the municipal planning strategy review.
So that cost is in the other professional fees?
Yes, so that includes cost to um planning services through brighter communities, our building and fire inspection services contract that we pay to the county of Kings. And a small, I think it's five thousand we pay to GIS, a contractor to do our updates to our um land use planning maps when there's changes made.
So have we done any math as to how much is actually crystal services or are we at any point where we're cheaper hiring our own staff person?
I would say those are things we need to consider. Um I would say though, let's complete the MPS review first to understand the impacts that will have on services before we decide to make changes to our staffing levels and contract. We need to understand um what we need to hire for first.
You know, it's just our revenue is nowhere reflected in our in our planning fees of what it costs to uh to uh institute the plan um in a lot of places. What's, how are, what can we do to look at our fees and how do they can share to other municipalities and stuff? We done any of that?
No, not um to a point where we can. So for something like a zoning letter, I believe is a good example, Krista has identified that we pay more to get the zoning letter completed than we recover from um customers. So that would be an easy one that we could likely make a change to easily and just break even on getting that done. For building permits, that is money that we collect, but then we pay to the county because they're providing a service. For development permits, we do hold on to that and we haven't reviewed that in since by law.
Yeah.
Um it sounds like it's fairly consistent, but that is an area that we can look at to do some adjustments based on one, cost recovery for things that we might not be recovering cost on. And two, whether we need to increase to reflect and stay even current with the other municipalities. So that is um something.
Any other questions on planning?
I guess my only question is related to what you've stated, Jim, is the uh strategic planning exercise that we went through, got almost there and then cut off the rails. Do we not, we, you feel that we can cut costs for services, contract? For planning, if we, if we go to a broader range, because I I keep seeing that, you know, it's not only the time, it's the time of staff.
Correct. So there would be some savings, um I think, but we would really need to run. I don't wanna say that and commit to that, there would be savings, but I can see that if we no longer require a development agreement for a piece of property and it can be approved by site plan approval, you're only paying for the cost of the development officer to review that plan. You're not paying for your lawyer to take a look at the development agreement and make sure that there's nothing in it that is um fled. So every development agreement gets reduced by a quarter, and so that's not included in the professional fees. Um and you're not paying the cost of a professional planner to review, so Crystal's fee would be higher than her development officer fee to review our development agreements. So you'd be paying a lower fee to have a staff person review, and as long as the applicant has provided the correct information and we know have to go back and, you know, continue to get more information, we pay as long as you stay within the hours that they're saying you're gonna pay for the site plan approval, um you would see some savings.
So if we were to look at other like municipalities that have moved to a different model than what we have, will we be able to discern whether or not it's worth our while?
Possibly, yes, I think you'd have to look at size and development activity.
Okay.
Because it's not just the size of the municipality and whether they have a planner or development officer and staff. It's also related to how many, how many applications they receive a year. So but there is some work that we can do on that for sure.
And that may answer part of our question by law, Mr. K.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Right, any further questions on this? All righty, where was the one next?
Starting at sort of like.
Yeah.
The no key budget in the past. Happy to answer any questions or follow up uh on uh on the draft operating budget if there's any questions on this.
Justin, I see.
I'm just, I'm just, okay, so uh you have expenses. What's it getting spent on?
Uh so this would include salary, uh only my s- my salary would be under.
A portion.
Of course, yes, um I didn't know if there's any other stat that would contribute to that. So then it breaks down, this is page seventy-three of the package. So any conferences, um major uh dollars under this would be um our partner contribution for the Valley Ray um community fiber network.
One second.
Richard, yeah, no, that's what I wanna see, right?
Yes.
Yes.
So on the other uh.
Draft two of this presentation is gonna be beautiful, I just know it too.
Pretty, that's a show, lots of circles and charts and.
The marketing promotion, marketing promotion and community development. Explain a bit further, um so that's any town promotional items that we're purchasing. We did have some centennial hats, we were actually out of hats, it's we we have eight hundred dollars in the budget for that, but it's nice to give community members as a thank you who are serving on communities we also support um and give small um prizes to, you know, local fundraisers or things of that nature. We have twenty-five hundred in here for events allocated specifically for businesses, so we've done some lunch and learns, um things of that nature. We support local businesses in advertisements over the holidays, so we offer a little subsidy with that, so there's money allocated in that. Um and that one as well.
Questions, Council? So just looking there, and so this is like my my business hat looking, I mean, the the expenses are not huge and that's excellent. But I'm just wondering, is, does any other municipal unit, is there sort of a way to create revenue through economic development, is there?
That's not a tax thing?
Yeah, like I mean, like I know, like, you know, we're we're benefiting by by putting out the work out there to to bring it in, but is there any sort of direct way to bring in revenue through economic development?
I think that's where Serena would like to go with that.
When you put out those bird centennial hats, I wanted one so bad and I would have paid thirty bucks for it. Just throwing that out there.
This was a setup between my question and, yeah, just it's working well.
And also, uh my brother-in-law, he's the mayor of Mayor Machine. And they have sweaters, hoodies, t-shirts, all sorts of stuff, people from the town, they come along with purchases, they can buy it off the town hall.
So.
We have a very early days that hats, hats and skirts, um again, might be a way to make um I don't know how much you're gonna make.
You're not gonna make any, a lot of money off of it, but it it also gives people like a sense of belonging. And like, because like I know, like, you go up there, you see like thirty people around town wearing the machine hat. Or you just catch one or two of them wearing the machine sweater, and none of the stuff was given it.
Right.
You know what I mean, like, people buy the stuff. So like, we could just even, just make it available for them.
It becomes part of the vast your program.
Yeah.
Some communities have called.
So we have a small gift shop in the brand-new uh area that we're doing up here for the front desk.
There's also opportunity, and I know it's only seasonal, but we have a museum of the ice, so people are also visiting.
Little Berwick snow glows with the apple lights, right?
Yes.
Yeah, definitely. And you could have set up your fatalities.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and and maybe just to highlight that, that was something I I meant to bring up before, and I didn't think of it during, like, the general uh expenses slide that was up there. Um but something that I noticed that a few of the other municipalities have too, is when they, when they go to events or conferences, is there, their conferences or staff have got like the magnetic pins. Um and they're nice, they're swanky, I mean, I've got one for, you know, I've had one for like. Yeah, if we could, if we could swing that, I'm just, that'd be nice, I did.
But that is a good touch.
Uh as a, as a good sentiment measure, I gave away my uh my town of Berwick crest pin. I gave that to Wes, uh the policy guy for minutes of them, because he was just decked out in every town pin that he could, and it was nice to get to contribute. And we were the only one on one side, so it made a big splash, but um but yeah, if we had something that we could use, uh sort of official council wear and that would be super simple, um that would be nice to have for representatives.
So if, there's a difference, you can have swag, which is your own stuff, and then you can have your merchandise.
Yeah.
And even if we sold merchandise that at least offset the cost of the swag, um might be something to look at. The challenge with merchandising is location and sales, you know, you don't want people calling, we're like, like, you're chasing around to find a place where you buy a hat.
I do know this nice little market between the mountains, so.
So there, that's, if you can have locations like that.
They do have town of Berwick.
They've got some good stuff there already and.
So that's, yeah, and that's, they've taken our proprietary logos.
They did reach out and ask.
They asked, we give permission for that, we don't charge them.
Correct, that was years.
And that's not uncommon, that towns don't charge someone to use.
There's some popping.
Yeah.
So they did, I remember.
There's a variety, we have, we have, with I, with Wildcats, we do some merchandising, we have options that we do with different, but anyway, it's something for looking.
Yeah.
Uh it's, any other questions on on Katie's budget? I I have two, Katie, just, so the marketing promotion, community development stuff that you're doing, how can your budget decrease on that? Why wouldn't we wanna be doing more of that, especially to get at least the same amount, sixteen hundred?
So in that, we removed, so Fall Fest was a project that we had worked on with Donna Conrad. We contributed a thousand dollars annually for advertising that has been removed after discussion with Donna, and we've been able to work something out. So that was a significant um amount of money that we removed. And then the other. And then the other one was, I think, salt skeeps. So in the past, I'm just looking for. So salt skeeps, um, in years past, the Valley region has entered a move within it, they no longer do it as a region. So that money was removed from the budget for that first, so those are the only two things that were removed.
Was that a REN directive before, or was that?
It was just a. I remember eighty. Uh, okay, yes.
I think that what the mayor might be saying is that instead of removing it, maybe we can find something else to use it for.
Just saying, I mean, we, it's a, it's one of those things that profiles.
Yeah, no, 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 we want him to be lean, you're okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Might also be a reason at that small amount to keep it in as well.
The other things that, the thing, the other items, I'm just pulling back to see what was actually removed, is we had. Um, three tickets for the Chamber Awards, of which we only used two, so we removed one ticket from that. Um, and then also, hmm, expenses, um. For my travel to the RNS conference was allocated under this budget since majority of my salary in my times. Under economic development or split, um, I had not attended that and have instead attended. Um, a day or two of, uh, the AMAN's conference, so real, reallocating those costs from moving to RNS. Um, is also where the other.
I have another question, I brought this up before, and I think it's more for, perhaps maybe Justin to look into. But the Valley Community Fiber Network, at the time this was created, this is a, creating a bit of a business to sell community fiber. Um, as a partnership, so if we're selling something, um, where's the revenue from it? And why are we, so I just, I'm not sure where that ever happened, and I know it's. You know, now. What, what do you know, why are we still paying it, like, it just, it seems like if it's, if it's no longer a service that. Is creating the revenue of which.
Because that's our contribution, but we also pay Valley Community Fiber Network common internet.
Right.
Costs for our internet for town hall, um, so that's separate from that contribution. So I can't remember from the orientation why there's no revenue coming. But we did receive some information that maybe we can forward to the rest of council. And Justin can ask the question.
About why? Yeah. Okay, anyway, it's something that was easy for. Any further questions on?
Well, I can just give a quick update, um, so essentially, Erin has, or sorry, Director. Has inputted some operational cost, so you will see a substantial increase over the current year. Uh, cause when we prepared the budget, the only known cost that we knew at the time was our insurance. Um, so as we've gone through almost a year of operations, um, we're starting to flush out. Some of the operational requirements for it, um, our revenue essentially, as I mentioned earlier. Just to have a net overall impact of zero to the town's operational budget. We just put in a plug figure to offset the expenses that are currently listed in the solar garden, so. As we work to resolve some of the regulatory issues with the solar garden, then we'll be able to, uh. You know, get more specific with the budget, and the most substantial expense that, um. We do have is the debt repayment, uh, so within this fiscal year, all we have is the, uh. Interest repayment, uh, so just one, and next year does include both interest and principal repayment. So we did note that on the slide, the total repayment is shy of four hundred thousand dollars. And as I mentioned earlier, we did place that to venture for a five-year term, so it will, uh. So it will come up, um, for refinancing. Any questions?
When we know the plugged value or unplugged values. Uh, within this budget will be in version two, version three, or.
Well.
Next, next, next year's first quarter.
I. Can we pause that till we can camera?
Okay.
Cause it, it will relate on the UAR decision.
Okay.
So I think to.
Alright, any further questions?
Uh, and I will say I have received a small update since, um. Since this information, um, has come forward, so essentially the costs that we're incurring from the BIC are for two summer students. So one is a museum manager, one is our BIC attendant, and so they are both hired. Um, they used to be hired through a provincial grant, but now we work with the museum to hire them both. Through a federal grant of which we receive more support and more from they, um, so you'll see reflected last year. Um, we're, we're spending, we're gonna be spending more of what we spent last year, closer to two thousand. Um, we're made closer to a break even, where this year, when it was represented, it was applying for a different grant. Now that we've been informed that we can receive the other one, uh, we'll be applying for that one instead. So essentially, what we're, what we will be paying this year is the difference between minimum wage and what the actual hourly rate. So they cover minimum wage for the time that they are employed. We will pay anything above minimum wage if it's a dollar, a dollar fifty-two dollars, so that is the amount that we will. Um, be paying for this year for the budget, the operational costs, as you can see, are minimum utilities are six fifty, so. That will look hopefully a little bit better.
I just want to say positive comment, I heard nothing but positivity from the staff and the different events that were put on there this year, it was, uh, it's very nice.
So, I have a question, have we heard anything from the museum people about the building? Um, structural repairs, structural requirements, so.
I, to date, I have not, and our department has not, um, I will say Taylor is usually the main contact and back and forth from our department with the BIC. And there's been nothing brought forward that we've been aware of, and we are in pretty constant conversation with them, we just. Um, in, in applying for the grants, which was done just before Christmas, there was lots of back and forth conversation and nothing at that time was, was brought forward.
They, um, John Rainforth invited me down to see the building to show me that they had some pleasure repairs. That they needed to do with the flooring and that sort of thing, and they weren't sure. How they're gonna cover that, and they may come into the town and, you know, ask for some support. So I said, well, sure, you should do it soon, we'll be budgeting, but there's the election and, so I. I never heard back from them, I just wanted to keep in follow-up to see about.
I didn't, but we just, um, at our last Valley Rec meeting, had a presentation from the culture, um, aspect of. Community culture, tourism, heritage, and there's from, there's funding for buildings such as that, so maybe we could support them. And working on an application, so I can pass that along to Taylor.
Might have had a volunteer come in and fix it, I don't, I don't know, he was looking at options of whether or not they'd fix it now or later or anyway, um. Yeah, I don't know if we should reach out, I, I hate to wait and then have them come to us the last minute. You know, um, but I. Go there and offer anything that we may may or may not have to give, so.
I suggest that Taylor just provide that, say, we attended a rec and, um, and say. We found out about these grants and wanted to pass them along, and maybe that will trigger whether they.
Yeah, so that would be a call with John Rainforth, um, John probably heads south in the next. Two weeks or month, so, yeah. Okay, great, thank you. We're coming, hanging in there, people, it's.
Did you bring cookies?
Something with caffeine in it, or maybe some Energizer drinks. Okay.
Uh, so you'll see an increase here of forty thousand dollars, uh, under wages. It's not an increase to our overall budget, it's just a reallocation of the active living coordinator's wages. Um, several years ago, our current active living coordinator was on our staff as a programmer. So when that programmer role was removed and. That capacity was then moved within our department under the rec, uh, under the active living coordinator role. We split the wages sixty percent through rec admin and forty percent through rec programming. Just to, um, actively capture how much of that role was programming. Now that that role has kind of settled and we're moving to more consistent, um, through staff. We realized that it wasn't accurate to say that that position was nearly half being spent on programming. So it was just a reallocation, so you'll see in the rec programming role that that forty thousand was removed. That is reflected as well as there was a provincial grant, um, which covered two fiscal years. Then please feel free to contribute to this, um, of a communications coordinator. So that grant was recognized under the, the recommend budget, and with that position no longer being here, that, um, grant is no longer. So you will see that as well.
Questions of any on this one? Well, alright. Next.
Okay, so the staff wages, again, um, you'll see there the eighty-six thousand, so that would be the forty thousand that was reallocated. In addition to the fact that there has been a significant change in our rec programming budget due to the fact that we no longer have the actor school program. So that was a five-day-a-week program, so we would have seen revenue from that as well as expenses because we were paying all of our staff. So the staff wages would be the complement of the forty thousand for the active living coordinator. Um, and then the remaining would have been all our after, after-school program staff, which we no longer employ because. Um, we don't run the program, that is also, um, where we're seeing a loss in revenue. Those are certainly the significant changes. In, in the rec program budget. We do offer a one-day-a-week program now, uh, I will mention, um, which operates at a break even, we do pay a staff member, it's offered free to the community. But we, uh, receive money from the provincial government to subsidize wages.
Councilor, are we looking at expanding that program or any other programs to, because are we looking at further programming that?
We did try, uh, so we did try to launch three different programs, um, at the beginning of the school year. Understanding the timing problem wasn't great because folks were joining, um, in at the new, uh, five-day-a-week program. So we have certainly tried that and are excited about trying possibilities, and maybe we don't go so much so fast. Uh, so the opportunity is certainly right now, right now, coming for this budget year. If we were to do something, it would be similar, um, in that we would pay someone but recoup the cost. To the provincial government, so I wouldn't anticipate we bringing significant dollars from it, um, but do you understand there may be an opportunity there to offer something more. More specific programming-wise.
Okay. Yeah.
So, so with, with the, um, Carol's Place and the, and the gym back here, how much utilization are we getting out of those? Facilities now with the, uh, some, our school programs?
Uh, the, out back, I would say ninety-eight percent, um, through the day, between pickleball. Um, and then we have several drop-in programs, there's also a basketball program, our one-day-a-week program, uh, Carol's Place. Very rarely rented, very rarely used during the winter months, um, during the summer, our day camp is there. So we're not paying a fee to use that space, um, our main rental revenue is certainly coming from, um, from the gymnasium between birthday parties. Private bookings, programs, um, things of that nature, but we are, uh, it's. Roger, our administrative, office administrative coordinator has taken over in supporting a lot of the bookings. Um, so I'm not seeing the day-to-day, but I know that when we're having requests coming in, there's very little space. And we do have the opportunity to contact other areas and do provide resources if there's someone looking for a space. But, yeah, we are, we're fully, fully booked in the back. Yeah, um, here, again, Carol's Place not, but.
So is Carol's, Carol's Place available during the winter?
It is.
Out right now because, yes, but yes, absolutely, we have, um, an agreement that you can, it's on our website.
So if you look under, um, facility rentals, it'll have the rate and all the information on there, but yes, it is, it is available. Yeah, there was a heat pump in there and.
And also the next two weeks.
We have the water shut off, uh, for some maintenance.
People ask, is there availability?
We have chairs, tables, there's an internet TV, there's similar resources to.
The longer program for skis, snowshoes, are we still doing that?
We are, yeah, I just saw it pop up there on our searches a few days ago, so Jordan was in on Friday, it's usually his work. One day of a canyon, cause he had lots of folks coming in to get skis, so folks are certainly utilizing that.
Questions? Katie, do you know how the after-school program is going with Y M C O, like, have you heard any comments?
Oh, uh, that it's going well, um, it is housed at the. At the school in gym after, it's a different program, I would say, it's more, um, just free play based. And, but as far as kids are enjoying it, um, they are full to the, to my knowledge, yeah. Um, and I've heard great things.
Yeah, uh, I mean, John's in it. Yeah, no, John's in it, um, I mean, and John had been, and Harder was just his age, he was in our program. Usually three days a week, but we paid for like the full week just cause we needed the flexibility to. Um, but, uh, so we started him out at this program for three days a week. And he enjoyed it so much that he's there five days a week now, um, so it's a great extra outlet for him to go and hang out with his friends. And do, uh, sometimes more creative things and get out and play in the woods, uh, I know this time of year, like, they're still outside. They will come inside before everybody goes, and, um, I think great response from like the Y M C A leaders too. So I think the program is going really, really well, uh, from everything I've heard. Um, so I, I think, through, people are happy with the program. Um, I know that, I, I'd heard that like the Y M C A had had some issues with like their staffing and how they were running like hours and everything. At the start, which is, you know, not a, not a big surprise for starting up a brand-new program, and it wasn't that long ago, they started up with the nursery school too. And turning that into a daycare, um, so I think most of the bugs are worked out now, and everything's become quite comfortable, yeah.
Alrighty. Let's move on. Fitness center, we're all.
Okay. So. Again, outside of wages, um, the budget, I feel is, is lean. You can see under general expenses, um, we have continued to cut every single cost we can. I will say that even though. We're not reaching our membership sales, and as we prepared the budget this year. Um, sat down and looked at a more accurate way to reflect monthly revenue. So in the past, um, what we did was find an average amount that we are receiving. So in the past, um what we did was find an average amount that we are receiving per month, per number. So it was looking like we're making thirty six dollars a month off of three hundred numbers. Um when we went, this year, we changed our rates. When we changed our rates, we realized that our rates were tax included. So what we were getting in average was included tax in it. So now, this year, our taxes are, say, forty dollars plus tax, rather than us showing. Our rates are forty seven dollars or or tax in, so in realizing that, we were over. Representing our revenue because tax was included in it.
Back to your end.
Yes.
That's why there's such a discrepancy in the revenue.
Which was just shy of fifteen thousand.
We just pay that that we collected for.
Yeah. So that was shy of just fifteen thousand dollars.
Not the way it's reported, we don't break out the fitness center, so it's all reported through town operations.
So we do.
Need to die.
Yeah, but because it's all under the same business number, we get the non-revatable portion from municipalities back. So we don't actually recuperate the fitness center H S T.
But it comes back into another portion of 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 the town's budgets, doesn't it?
No.
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 Where's it go?
Well, we don't report that we, like when we jump into the system, like we're not reporting that we have sales tax on the fitness center.
So we've been keeping it.
Well, essentially, yeah, like because when we remit our H S T. Like our, we don't break it, it's like a, I don't know, like, I'm not sure what's, I want.
So if.
That's the case, then it it is our revenue, you know, therefore it should it show as.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we don't bring it up because for municipality, so if the fitness center operated on its own, then it would be a hundred percent. And you'd have a hundred percent I T C like we do in B C. But because we claim the non-rev- non-revatable portion for the municipality, we don't remit that we make X amount of dollars on. Membership, like when it comes into our financial system, it just comes in purely as revenue.
Okay, so when we had that a fifty, it wasn't a fifty. No, like we're trying to figure out why there's always such a difference in.
Yeah, sorry, from, yeah, so from a revenue perspective, everything that gets flowed in from the system at the fitness center is pure revenue. Okay, so that's not a reason why it's always uh.
Uh so the other thing I will say, though, that before that even happened, um we used to base revenue on, say, we found the average amount. That each member was paying a month, so we would say, basically, if we had three hundred members every month, we would bring in this amount. Due to the fact that there is such. Considerable amount of fluctuation and how many people are coming and going, what kind of memberships are going, what we do is look at the last twenty four months. And we wrote down monthly revenue and we found an average over the last twenty four months, this is a monthly, this is our average monthly revenue, and we times that by twelve. Looking at membership because of the fact that it is very difficult to get an accurate depiction of how many active members we have each month. Because of the amount of people coming and going and the fact that you have to bring or someone inactive. But say they're there for thirty days and people join at all different times of the month, some people join for three months, six months, a year. You'd have to go into the system every day and go through all four hundred members in the system to mark them as inactive the day after that they were supposed to come back. So it was just proved very difficult to get an accurate number of this is how many were there per month. So we did average, and I averaged, and maybe this is something that I'm going to need to go back and do. Because looking at revenue for version one of the budget, it's with the tat with no tax included, and it's the base rate. Sorry, I'm working through all this.
Yeah, so version two.
Yes, but I mean, so, but I understand how you talk to count the members. But why is it tough to count the revenue? How much money came in from April one to March thirty first?
Yeah, so, no, and and we do, sorry, no, go ahead. At the end of the year, we know that, but I think what Katie's saying is previously we've budgeted based on the number of members, not. Average revenue we brought in.
Right.
So we've been timesing a expected number of members times the rate, a rate, as opposed to.
Looking at.
An average month times the number of months.
And and I understand what you're saying, why aren't we taking last year's revenue measures of that? I see what you're saying.
Well, part of it was council's direction has been to improve membership, and so we were trying to allocate it to a membership member as opposed to.
But that can be a different number, a different, it doesn't have to be in the budget, it's the number of members, it doesn't have to be in the budget. It can be a stat that comes, and use your formula for that, but the budget number should be related to the actual.
But a budget also is what you want to accomplish, and I think.
And it's also based on where we're at right now, like we're mid-January, so we're not going to have full numbers. We could take numbers from last January, but we wouldn't have numbers reflected of this, which is still in this budget year. Like we go to the end of March to have accurate numbers for this twenty four, twenty five budget to be able to use to for the twenty five, twenty six.
If there is, then council.
I just wanted to comment the fitness center at Christmas time for giving the university students a special rate, five dollars for whatever half the month, whether when they came back, they just had to show the university card, and I thought that was very nice. I just wanted to make that comment.
Sounds well. So where do we, is the only place to buy like the fitness center membership, is that just at the fitness center? Do we sell them at the front desk, is that something that we'd be?
We have shorter hours than they do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have a point of sale system.
Yeah.
That records their membership and everything, and they accept credit cards at the fitness center.
So is there, so their point of sale system, is it online? Is it like, I mean, do you, is it with like a machine or is it like online where like you take the credit card and take it in?
Well, they have it, like a debit machine, um but their P O, P O S is on their desktop there. So it's not like a cloud based system, and so you have to physically.
Yeah.
To purchase the membership.
I'm just wondering if there was, if if we might have the opportunity to expand that membership if there was an online payment system. You know, so if if there was the P O S, but if there's also a way to make that payment online and then you could, we could advertise. That you can also buy your fitness memberships here, or that you could buy them online as well before you even get in there.
And you fact just for people have to go there.
Yeah.
I know, I I see.
Yeah, well, because then they could buy the membership and then if they don't show up, then you know, we still get their cash and they get their pounds, right? So um but.
Long term, right, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking of ways to try and 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 pump up that revenue and. And I mean, I know we talked about other marketing campaigns and things before, but um.
There's another place you could tell that we're at, perhaps.
And you will see also a slight decrease in operations because um equipment maintenance, now that it is seeing a life cycle. Life cycle of a general piece of um equipment, we are starting to incur um certainly some higher maintenance fees when it comes to. Specifically our cardio equipment, the life cycle, we need to reach the end of.
You're running out of transfer days.
Just a couple, couple of comments, and I'm only a recent to just been at fitness center, but I, but I, but I will say a couple of things. One is, I noticed that when it reads my chip card or whatever it is, that sometimes it reads it twice.
Okay.
So you may not be getting accurate information of how how many people are there, especially if I've been there twice in one day and only it already showed up once.
You shouldn't say that, you're just saying you were there twice.
I, my wife always was.
Yes.
Council James is going to be jacked.
With the scanning system and I T has been trying to um work with Allison at the fitness center to figure out that. But when the scanning moved off of the front door, there's been some estimates, this is when their folks are scanning in, only the scan in is was affected, it doesn't have.
Yeah, the other thing is that there's a lot of good equipment that is up there, a lot of good staff that are there, and I do appreciate their their commitment to it. But one thing I do notice that is different from when I went into the one at the health center is that there was a significant amount. Of sponsorship in some of the other uh hard help. Um cardiovascular um gymnasiums that you can go to. And there, and there's lots of sponsorship going up the stairs, lots of sponsorship when you look out over the board of the ice. But there's none within those, and the people that are selling you the equipment or maintaining it. Um may look for an opportunity to how to, do I sponsor some of this equipment for you? Or how do I get my name out of the box around this gym while people are working at? So I'll just put that.
I think um where, there's actually a large shortage of equipment maintenance staff in the province. Um Spartan, who traditionally supplies and services majority of the machines, only have one staff that work the entire province. Um it is an incredible struggle to have them um work on anything, which has proven even more difficult. Um and Allison is, again, as you mentioned, wonderful staff up there, have really tried to do the best they can with what they have. And expand their knowledge base to be able to maintain the equipment to the best of um their abilities. But it's, yeah, it's a challenge um when it comes to the equipment manufacturers, but some other. Possibilities around sponsorship.
I I know, I know that some of the health centers in that, in that um. Other fitness centers. Do have, do do sponsorships, so don't know if it's, if if Frasier's will do, going up the steps. Is there a possibility of them having more?
The, we had a fitness center committee originally when the uh when we first opened. And one of the things was that that committee was going to do was sponsorship. In fact, we actually did have a sponsor in Apple Valley Pete, and I forget her name, Andres. Mrs. Andres came and made the donation, we had a picture and that sort of thing done. That and the committee was expanded and that piece just went by the way it sounds, but it's.
If council feels that that is. It's something we can look at.
I just put it out there as a possibility.
I think coming up the stairs is probably not going to work because it's the K F C C, but we'd have to have something internal.
The, some of the things that that committee was looking at is buy a piece of equipment, so you put your advertisement on one of the treadmills. And then in the future, if you need to replace it, then it's still sponsored by and you get additional money in. Or things on the walls, those equipment walls, um are different ways to do it.
Yeah.
Much like the rest of the building does it, right? Curling club does it, they sell space on the walls, they space on the ice, the arena does it, they spell, sell it, every space they possibly can, I mean, but it's, it's a.
Someone does have to be in trouble.
It absolutely, absolutely, it's a.
Yeah, I can understand the um the purchase of equipment too, but it would be more certainly like operational, like committing a certain amount. Over a certain amount of years or giving lump sums to to fund the operation of it, not the any capital improvement. Because where we're seeing significant losses is that we haven't even purchased capital equipment, this is just to break even, to operate it.
Yeah.
There's, you know, we have to be very creative to sell sponsorship, and you know, that's some heaven that building like. And it's anyway, it's um something to perhaps look into or have conversation. Any other questions? Katie, I have one around the personal trainers, right? I see there's quite a different three thousand dollars difference between what we take in in revenue for personal trainer and what we we cost. So we're subsidizing somebody to take personal training, they don't pay for that?
No, so what is also in there is the fees that we pay to the folks who run the classes. So we do yoga, spin.
Okay, so.
That's in the um.
Which is a break.
Corporate, yeah.
So personal training piece breaks even, but your classes that you offer, that expenses in those are personal trainers.
Yes, under the same, we do, and to clarify, personal training, um we recoup fifteen percent of the expense. So we are collecting all of the revenue when anyone signs up for personal training sessions, but then we are then invoiced by the personal trainer for eighty five percent. Uh what the.
So we're actually making fifteen percent on the personal training services is provided. Anything else on? Okay, parks and facilities.
I know, I'm like, I can.
No, I got it.
Okay.
We uh. We show um slight increase in revenue, uh I I think more noticeable is a. Slightly larger increase in expenses forecasted, a thirty three thousand dollar increase. Of that, of that thirty three thousand dollars, uh sixty percent of it is allotted to uh new gardens. In the new community gardens behind town hall, um a new picnic table, new garbage cans. One new garbage can, one new picnic table to replace the worst in the parks within the town. But there's a, there's a relatively significantly high dollar value going to Chute Park. To do some, to do some repairs to Chute Park, um that number could still change. Uh we have, we have a, we have a quote of ten thousand dollars worth of wood and construction materials. Uh but that number could be decreased. So we're we're still looking at that, um we also have some potential adjustments to make to the vehicle cost. We do have a park's truck, that truck needs maintenance, but it's not necessarily a park's truck twelve months in a year. For certain months of the year, it becomes a public works truck. So we do a little double, triple check to make sure you're not double dipping in some of the costs associated with that truck. So again, it it does show an increase, we are, we are uh purchasing new picnic table, purchasing new garbage cans. Making some substantial repairs to an existing park. Another thing with this is the Harvestwood Trail. So we've, we've assumed that we'll be taking over uh hundred percent of the maintenance on Harvestwood Trail within town limits. And so we've added an additional six thousand dollars, which wouldn't have been in the past budget. For Harvestwood Trail, six thousand sounds like a lot, uh five thousand of that will get upgraded twice, and that'll be gone. So that gives us a thousand dollars for ditching waste removal, garbage pickup, and maybe some lending if we're lucky. Oh, sorry. That's, that's a very high level, very brief explanation of it. Again, I think there's some uh fine tuning we can do for Chute Park, there's some fine tuning we can do with the vehicle costs. And and we might need to think about Harvestwood Trail, because again, that's a very popular trail and six thousand dollars isn't going to last very long.
Council.
Just uh glad to see that something's happening now on Chute Park. Uh I did have a number of people that brought that forward to me. And I just, my question is that these, the people that have brought it forward to me also know how to read a budget quite well. And when I look at the budget here, you you do have Rainforest Park down here at a large block of dollars and zero dollars gathered together. And they sort of say, what about my part?
Yeah.
Just to comment.
So.
Other than.
That's actually on, that's on me, I just noticed that as well, so when it got loaded, it loaded into the incorrect account. Um and what we're doing is, we're trying to streamline our G L account before we move to a new system.
Okay.
Um so we capture the detail by parks um through projects rather than having a chart account that's really long. So we're trying to consolidate that, let's provide the detail in the budget, um and it just got loaded into the Rainforest Park rather than the general area.
So will we eventually show it?
So will we eventually show the breakdown? Because the public does read those.
Absolutely, yeah, and we provide it, like, we'll provide that breakdown, it just won't look like in this part of the document.
So version two it will.
Yes.
Yeah, there's there's fifteen line items feeding into that fifty-two thousand dollars, so there is some gray area that could be added. I I think another thing that's uh contributing to that higher anticipated cost is a. A new walking trail within Centennial Park, uh that will connect with Zingo in the in the front Newman Street Gate to the washrooms. Um it would, it would be an accessible walking path throughout the park, uh again, connecting Rainforest to the.
That's not, not.
Is that capital?
Yeah. Let's not know.
But we are reviewing those numbers based on.
Any further questions? Who's doing the limbing down there now on the uh on the trail?
Uh we are as time permits.
So there's two machines down there, one's limbing through to uh Grandview Manor, and another one is, uh well, it's been working its way down the trail.
I think that's us now this week.
It's our. Is that our equipment?
Yep, um the grinder, the grinder's ours, um I think everything they're using is ours.
And we are doing the Stoneville Trail up through to to the manor then?
I'm not sure.
Well, I'm sure, because I saw it going there.
But was it us?
Well, that's my question.
I do, like, I did have a discussion with public, I know that they were working on the Harvest Moon and. That's the last update that I had heard, I'm not sure of that time, I I can't speak to this little picture, but I would assume if that's us working and it's the same.
I'm still learning their trails, so.
Well, but the Stoneville Club does some of that, I mean, they have, they have huge pieces of equipment. You had part of the groomer, limmers and that kind of thing, so I just wasn't sure if we're doing that or if we have, if we have any kind of agreement with them. To do some limbing for us.
I think the only agreement that we have at this time is with um. For the service twice a year, but yeah, we're going for a grading. And at this point, we're still looking at and after what it is looking at limbing and and how that gets managed now.
Then was a member of the public that was doing some limbing near Maple Avenue on Harvest Moon Trail this weekend.
Was it?
And we uh did our best to shut that down, um somebody was harvesting firewood, I believe.
Oh, so he's in there, right?
Thank you, actually.
It was, it part of you wants to let him keep going.
We uh we did get some correspondence tonight, actually, just on some comments on the care and maintenance of the Harvest Moon Trail too and. Uh the work of the grading and things are there, not necessarily, it it's not unconfer, it's not the most part, uh so. Some concern we need to look at.
Specific to what's going on there now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, um truly wise.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
You know, I'm still learning a lot of these things, my understanding is the Harvest Moon Trail had a coalition that did a lot of the maintenance. Up until relative recently.
Well, the coalition still exists, but it's a maintenance beast doesn't.
Yeah. Doesn't or hasn't?
Um, well, it hasn't when it was supposed to. Now it doesn't.
Not officially.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's it um for. Okay, so now we're talking about what's not there to come and to have some conversation on, so.
Um.
Group wise?
I'm gonna talk for this one.
Yeah.
One, one thing that we would see direction on is senior parks laborer. Traditionally, that's been a part-time position, full-time position for a short period of time, sixteen weeks. Uh this year, we did keep that employee till the end of the calendar year, and we kept it very busy till the end of the calendar year. Current budget has uh that individual in for sixteen weeks again, uh but there is value that could come by keeping. Uh to not necessarily for a tw- a a full twelve month period, but from, you know, late April till the end of the calendar year. That additional, the the mowing season starts in late April, um if we don't have park staff then pulling public works from. Routine maintenance they could be doing and and they're taking over parks maintenance, uh and the same thing happens at the end of the summer. When the park staff leaves in uh early September, the grass continues to grow, this year we mowed uh almost till the end of November. And uh a- again, if we don't have staff to do that, then we're pulling public works from work they could be doing and and they're spending time on. Grass management, so there is uh some value just with respect to keeping the public works crew doing what they should be doing. Um in having that positioned staff for a longer period of time. Another thing is when you consider things like Harvest Moon Trail, we're gonna have a lot more limbing and a lot more maintenance than we've had in the past. So it 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 doesn't just make sense when you consider last year's workload, it makes, in my opinion, even more sense when you consider a larger work scope. So again, we need to seek direction on the time duration of that particular position.
So you say the budget implications twenty-four. Twenty-four K in addition to eighteen, that's.
And that twenty-four K would take from uh April, September to the end of the calendar.
And how much would it be from April first to April first? At some point, this person's not gonna come back, they're going to leave and say, I've had enough. If you can't afford me full time for Tana Burke, I thank you for your opportunity, I'm now going to move on. So I'll I'll ask the question, how much per view year, if you if you could give me that number, I'd like to. Were that close?
It's gotta be approximately uh an additional twenty-one thousand. Approximately for that, for those additional, uh four months.
From what I'm paying forty-five thousand, it's eighty-five thousand.
Well, eighteen plus twenty-four plus twenty-one, so twenty-four plus eighteen is. Uh that's, it's not just salary, that's.
Yeah.
That overall compensation, right? Is that right, Lisa, like?
Uh sure.
Sixty-three ballpark.
Very quite high.
I don't know, you're, I haven't opened up, just keep chatting and I'll figure it out. May I pause that? Yeah, circle back to this.
So January, February, March, she's three months.
I don't get paid when I get paid, yeah.
Yeah, and then you.
So Rick or just making out.
Okay, could we have, I think, counselor black act is. There was a math force, or should we just defer that to Lisa's?
Yes, because it would also include um eligibility for pension and benefits, so it's not just.
That's right.
So please continue and circle back to me.
So let's move to the next item, which would be the bylaw officer.
So this, this was included last year in the budget, um it did not get approved to carry forward or to move forward with. It was something that through feedback we heard from members of council on their campaign trail that could be beneficial, as I mentioned. Um things like having a bylaw officer that could. And mediate conversations between neighbors on unsightly premises. Um dogs, we are seeing a huge increase in um dog-related complaints. So not necessarily to like animal control in the sense of having to deal with an animal, but even just knocking someone's door and saying. Your dog should be on a leash, or, you know, can you be mindful of this? Um so we have a cost of what it would be to have a fifty percent bylaw officer. Included in the budget and the budget implication. Is twenty-nine thousand, though, that seems lower, but for fifty percent, yeah, it still seems lower.
It was best on step one of the salary scale.
Yeah, like your grid line, but they might have to be, and I know I told you to use that. But I think we need to check because we'd want them to be a commissioner and that might increase the cost that you have to pay for them. Because they can't write tickets unless they're a commissioner. So.
So we're gonna get more fees in in our bylaw officer than we do from there, same thing? Which wouldn't have to be much.
So previously, my understanding was the direction was never given to make revenue off of the bylaw officer. But if it comes to the point where you wanna write a ticket, um because all other avenues have failed. You do need someone to be a commissioner, like we send out oops letters and things with a veil threat of. Enforcement, but unfortunately, no one on staff has the credentials or. Special constable designation to be able to write those tickets. So all of our bylaws that are presented, for example, that allow us to write fines against for noise or something. We don't have anyone who can actually write those tickets. So this would be um including someone. Who would be able to do those, not to say that they are owed their payment to rack up expect or revenue. Unless council directs that, but um it would take a lot of pressure off of or resolve some of the complaints that. Myself and uh the executive coordinator receive or assistant receives through. Um the public or unsightly premises or dog complaints or noise by law. offenses. Some of the things that we have developed and control officer may do, but we're not gonna pay Crystal to come. Do that work, but we could have someone who a measured sense and make sure that's compliant and then, so there's a, there's a lot of things that. You need to do to enforce something if we get to that point and we don't have the resources or time to spend. Taking pictures and reviewing on.
So thoughts on that, would we want to find any direction at this point, doesn't mean that we can't take it, oh, we definitely put it in now, but it just means it's. To be added for review with the next version, which then we'll go through the similar process of review and. Maybe adding things and maybe deleting things.
Any chance our parks guy wants uh some additional training and then we're killing two birds with one stone?
So they would work then during the summer um a hundred and fifty percent?
I'm just, you could allocate like, I mean, like when we had a uh, yeah, I mean, this idea is not going anywhere, but. Our our bylaw person when they were here before didn't work exactly Monday to Friday, so if there was like a day. Or two a week that were.
I think the issue is that the time of year that your parks person is busy is the same time of year that your bylaw person is likely busy. Where it's a, it's a good thought, I just practically don't know if it works out, but I think that. Because this is one area where we thought about, you know, can we utilize some of our outside workers to do some of this? In, or not enforcement, but documentation.
Yeah.
But it is hard to schedule, like it sounds like a simple thing, like, you know, put in your calendar that you need to go drive by this property and take a. A picture, take pictures, but.
While you're on your mower.
But it doesn't happen that easily, um because emergencies happen and other things come up, so having someone who can. Again, it still sounds very simple, but I could have ten reminders in my calendar, I need to go do this and. I'm offsite at a meeting and don't do this, I mean, it wouldn't be me doing it, but those, that's the type of thing that.
Skill, the skill sets, skill levels that are needed in each are a little bit different. The only, the only thing you could really look at is how could you marry it with another job and take? Take uh someone else's position and marry it with the uh with the park staff position. I don't know if that could be arranged, I I just can't see it in the staff.
Yeah, we normally those kind of come, if there is a natural fit, we, someone will think of it, but not yet. Still something to think about, it's having a back of your mind.
No, this is a long time ago, I was commissioner for about forty years.
Do you apply?
I gave up my commission and left provincial government, but it was not that complicated of a process and it didn't. Cost that much unless they've changed the process over the years.
Going to check.
Is that the same as? When you say commissioner, do you also, is it the same? Oh, that's not the same.
That's not the same, it's a different one.
Yeah, because Chris says he's a commissioner.
Can you carry?
Yeah, they did things differently in the middle of the night, yeah.
All right, any thoughts on that, any?
I think, I think we had it, and like you said, we could take it out if we have to.
Yeah.
I think it should be something to be considered.
Yeah. That said, this is where I fall into that half thought again, and this is the stuff of. Do we want this to go to the public right away, or do we wanna have a little bit more time to consider this in version two before we put that out there?
Because you can still always have this as options.
Yeah.
And give direction later to include it in the version, but this is the opportunity where we didn't wanna include it. They have to take it out, we wanted to give direction, we really want to see it in there, or is it still kind of a over here?
So can we clean up the math a bit on that and then and then kind of look at how. Version two comes out and then kind of make a decision, or, so like, you're already talking that. Bylaw officer may, twenty-nine may not be the right number, so what would be the right number, get the right number?
Yeah.
Um the same, we guys, if we're ready to go back to part one, we've got anywhere from sixteen weeks at eighteen. To full-time seasonal at twenty-four and now full-time year-round at?
Seventy.
Seventy.
So, so full-time seasonal would actually be thirty, forty-two, right? Yes, yes, yeah.
So we're gonna go from eighteen thousand to seventy-three?
Seventy.
Yeah, because it's loaded, so. Oh, sorry.
So we're not, we've not made a final decision, our only, what we're gonna do is provide some direction. Do we want to even bother putting it in the version two to look at? The uh, then those new numbers will look like when they go over to. That's, that's all we're doing at this point.
So, based on experience and the conversations when we were out campaigning. Um so I'll speak to the park staff position first because that's closer to my heart than the bylaw officer. I'd really like to see it at the very least, have a seasonal, a seasonal position, just simply because. I believe it's really important at one year times that get done or get missed um around. How the town looks and how it's looked after and stuff like that. But I also believe based on, you know, sort of conversations and I got by law officer to came up often enough. In many different ways that they want, people want someone to be making sure that the rules got followed. And they didn't like taking things into their own hands, but all, you know, but that's kind of. Yeah, yeah, or just ignore it, but just do about it.
I think the public has to come back and say, okay, we're talking increasing costs, this has to go. We want, we want this freezer budget or whatever.
Yeah.
Participatory.
So I think the options have to be there.
The one will flesh out a little bit more and just so that you understand why it's so different between eighteen and seventy. Is because the eighteen is not a union position. As soon as it becomes a union position, we're required to pay a certain rate and we're required to pay certain benefits and everything. And the union has really been following this position, so we're really not gonna get away much longer with this not being a union position if it becomes. Full-time, so that's part of the reason that we're seeing a difference in. So that's part of the reason that we're seeing a difference in that there's a lot of additional benefits that are added when it becomes a union position versus parks, summer staff lead hand, or lead, summer parks lead versus full-time.
I understand that, I'll just ask, contract, I agree on, on the parks position. Putting it out to see what comes back, I certainly think that it's needed in the town. On the bylaw, bylaw officer, is there an opportunity to ask a neighbor?
Yes.
Town neighbor to share in fifty percent, is there an opportunity for, for us to look at it under contract?
Probably, or could be, yes, so I think that's something, I, I meant to reach out to Wilco, and I will, because I think they were exploring some type of community bylaw officer for this year's budget. So even if they could give us an updated cost and what they're paying that individual to help with the budget, I don't know if they'd have capacity, but there might be another municipality like Middleton that may be looking for, so we can explore that for the next round or when we get the information.
So I guess the direction is to continue to do the work on adding our staff position to full-time, and the bylaw officer gets some numbers on that, and then we'll keep it separate?
Yeah, that's, I was just gonna ask, so we want to flush this, so as a way to present to the public that keep it separate for the, is that?
Yeah, so how we wanna do that? Okay, so can we move on to the tax rate option, so at this point, there is no, there's no addition to tax rate, do we want to have no change in it, so do we want to look at tax rate options to be presented, so which could be increasing more likely, but also could be decreasing? We want to provide direction to drop the tax rate, but then that makes your decision at the end of the day, what's the budget, a whole lot more difficult, so, because we're nowhere close to being balanced at this point.
Yes.
Seven cents, aren't we?
We're one eighty, it's our, that's it.
So at six cents?
The only thing that is not in this budget is the MBS review. Nothing is included.
So we've not budgeted anything for Crystal's time to do that, which is.
Okay. The mayor and I are meeting for the next Friday to talk about that, so for version two, we'll be able to provide to council an idea of what that cost may be, but there is nothing in this current version to do that additional, complete that process.
So, based on some of our discussions tonight, the things we've talked about, before we had those other two, we're probably, we're closer to ten cents on the tax rate. Which makes it two hundred and, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
With the, with the one eighty that we currently have, it's seven cents.
Seven cents, yeah, but we had some things to talk.
And then add in the MBS or.
Yeah.
Positions.
So we're seven to ten percent at this point.
Yeah.
So.
That one was a rollback last year, that's what I did.
Yeah. So at this point, do we want them to build any tax increase in there?
No.
No.
Nope. If anything, I'd like to see a drop of penny.
Oh, okay.
Just one, one penny, that's all enough support.
Yeah, so that means we gotta.
Reduction is specific expenses, direction on those?
So we're, so we're now, we got, so let's, if we, if we're gonna do that, we now have to identify for them at least a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of cuts that we've seen, plus another twenty to get us a one-cent decrease, so now we gotta provide suggestions of where we're gonna find two hundred thousand dollars. Who would like to begin with some discussion on that? And maybe, I think we're running late to do this.
Yeah.
So I say, that's what you have to think about, and when we move into the next conversation on this, we'll begin that exercise. Okay, so can we just, can we leave it now? And then we'll have to think about a little bit more of timing for this, more discussion on this, and also the conversation of the process. I think we'll leave that with perhaps Jennifer and Lisa to think about whether we want to change the schedule, we need to throw another meeting in there, what we may need to do, because I, we haven't finished this yet, so.
So could we request that your feedback on specific lines that you want to explore for decrease, to have that discussion on January twenty-eighth, we'll add that as a, as an item? So we'll present the capital budget, but then if we could also discuss those items to inform version two.
My request as well, even if it's just a copy of this presentation, as it is tonight, okay, yeah.
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 It will be available on website, but we'll also put it on your council chair on the side.
Perfect, perfect.
Um.
It will be tomorrow.
Okay.
It's almost tomorrow anyway.
My bedtime reminder went off twenty minutes ago.
Two, I think we need to respond to, I'm not sure that we want to put that discussion on top of the committee, the whole meeting with the budget, to capital stuff at this point, because I think it would be there for the time. So we should give that some thought about how we do that, when we have some thought about whether or not we change that schedule, would we add another just a council-only workshop meeting around some of this stuff? I don't know, but it's kind of hard, I don't, I don't, I think we're at a point where we shouldn't try to make too many more decisions.
No.
It's too late, I, just, because we do have more items on the agenda getting to get through.
I agree, I, I only wanted to make one comment, and that's on the reserve, I'd like to know where our reserves fit so that we can make a decision related to the reserves, and based on what the FMI and the financial indicators are telling us, okay?
I will bring that on the twenty eighth.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Unless we do, and that's a conversation we're gonna have, as to whether or not we need to stick in another meeting.
Before we're able to bring that information, we need to flush up the funding sources for the capital, because those are likely gonna drive the serfs down.
So maybe we do the twenty eighth, that's, okay, that's something we should.
Yes.
And that may take more increase of tax.
And then you'll have the debt service scenarios and impact to consider as well.
Okay, so we're gonna move to item number six, which, happy to say we do not have any correspondence, but just to let you know that correspondence that that we're gonna see at council will be more higher-level council organizational correspondence we may get, if we're getting letters or information, comments, concerns from the, the public related to suggestions, complaints, issues, we'll forward those either directly to the staff or a committee to deal with. So you're not gonna see those kind of letters at the council level, just kind of for information sake, so some of those things may have come in now, and they'll go to appropriate staff or committee to handle. Mayor's report that that is on the insert later.
It's, it's updated in everybody's online version, if you pull up the old one from the other day, the saved it or whatever, it's not there, but if you pull up the current one, it is in.
You have any questions, I'll call me tomorrow.
I'm just, just one comment, okay? I'm sorry, the area board meeting appears to come, we put with the, when?
It does. I had a conversation with the, with, they may be changing that, they're not sure they have one. So we may see something on that, or we may, you know, go back, we did have to chat about that.
It can only be at one place.
Yeah, exactly, she's aware of the conflict.
Okay.
No. All right, so now we need a motion to go with the camera. So move by, Council Wall, second by Council Jameson, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're in camera.
You guys gonna hang out?
And.